October 12, 2022, morning session at Portland City Council. Good morning, Kealan, please call the roll.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Maps.
Here.
Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Hardesty.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. Now, let's start off by hearing the rules of order and decorum from our legal counsel. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to the Portland City Council. City Council is holding hybrid public meetings with in-person attendance in addition to electronic attendance. If you wish to testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance by visiting the council agenda on the council clerk's webpage at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. You may sign up for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or the first readings of ordinances. Written testimony may be submitted at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct, such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations, will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. First up is communications. First individual, please. Item number 839.
Request of Bridge Crane Simcha Johnson to address council regarding 2017 Yom Kippur Stampede.
Good morning.
Buenos dias. Good morning, everyone. I chose to say I'm Bridge Crane Charles Simcha Johnson. Some of you know me better than others. There's a lot to talk about. It's been a pretty busy North American life since 1492. It was this day in 1492 that the Ibero Italian terrorist, Christopher Columbus, began his persecution of the Taino people near Puerto Rico. We celebrated indigenous people with a bank holiday on Monday, but I certainly think that the crimes of early oligarchs and royalists that invaded this continent can be stretched over through today to today. Speaking of crimes, journalist Alice Speary had to get an attorney, Attorney R. Peck. That attorney had to sue Yaw's Police Department. That happens a lot. You know, just recently, we had a woman protester who the jury decided had suffered $40,000 worth of violence at the hands of Portland police. Probably at least a few of you, definitely Commissioner Hardesty, know people who have suffered violence here on the premises. My introductory comments said Yom Kippur stampede of 2017, but that was off by a year. Of course, by the 2017, we'd left the regime of Charlie Hales, former mayor, and his last-minute efforts to get a police contract through. Unfortunately, nobody seems to say that things have gotten better with the Portland Police Department since that Yom Kippur in 2016, when many people, Teresa Rayford, Sarah Hobbs, were injured or involved in the violence pushing citizens out the back Fifth Avenue door of City Hall. Since that time, of course, there's been different kinds of violence. Mayor Wheeler murdered the COAB so that he could create the PSEP. The Community Oversight Advisory Board was killed off. The PSEP, I think, is going to be talking to us tonight about violence during the protests in the George Floyd period. Nice bigger numbers than the little red digital clock that used to be here. Maybe Commissioner Ryan remembers the little red digital clock from doing activism, sitting here. I know Commissioner Hardesty has testified on the side of the old red digital clock that used to be here. When I talked about Attorney Riann Orion Peck and Alice Speary, that was, of course, because three years ago today, Iaka Arminio Shonkeleher was murdered, and it took a long time for the police to figure out if they were ever going to get that to the DA. They finally have. There's a lot of challenges facing the city. I wish you all the best of luck.
Yeah, Commissioner Hardesty.
Excuse me, Bridge Crane Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me just say, I am happy to see you healthy back at City Hall. Well, you know, relatively, right? We're all only temporarily healthy, but it's good to see you back in form and showing up at City Hall. I'm kind of giddy today that we have as many people as we do in City Hall. It's like, it's looking like people are coming back to their house.
We're scared about November, but we'll all do the right, voters will do the right thing.
Don't be scared. There's nothing to be scared about. Just don't read the headlines, you'll be fine.
Good advice to live by. Next individual, please, Kealan. Item number 840.
Request of Philip Tobias to address council regarding the importance of honesty.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council.
Commissioner Hardesty, this is for you. One year ago, I emailed your office seeking clarification about some discrepancies I had found in your military service timeline. In that year, I haven't heard back from you, but I know you're getting my emails because I had emailed your office about a donation problem I had, and shockingly, you got back to me within a day. Well, on that point, I actually FOIA'd your records. I partnered with a nonprofit to get your military service records. In 2018, the Portland Mercury, in their endorsement article, they said your campaign had gave them paperwork, but said you were honorably discharged in 1979 before continuing in the reserves into 1984. All of that is a lie. So I'm just wondering what information you actually gave the Portland Mercury. But that's not the only misinformation I've found. You've made... Which part?
What I gave the Mercury is not for you to choose, and it is intended for...
You were not discharged in 1979. Well, let me finish my speech. So, but that's not the only discrepancies I found. On the city website and with certain, in other interviews, you've said you were, you served the Board of the US at Summer Gompers from 1978 to 1983. As I said, I have your military records. That's a lie. You served the Board for 13 months, from November, for 13 months. And speaking, I'm going to move off the military records for just a moment and talk about your fake college degree, Mrs. Hardesty. On LinkedIn, you claim a college degree from Baltimore Community College, but on election filings, you admit, in the 2018 election filings for city council...
So, Mayor, should I allow him to continue to lie on me on the public record?
May I finish? I can document.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Let's do this. You finish, and then the commissioner gets to respond. How about that?
Totally agree.
All right. So why don't you finish your three minutes? And, okay, fair enough. Thank you.
So, back to the fake college degree. On LinkedIn, Commissioner Hardesty claims associates and business from the community college in Baltimore, but in the 2018 city filing for city commissioner, she admits that she dropped out, and she does not have a college degree. And so I just think between these numerous lies, between her military service record and her fake college degree, you know, she's misleading voters, taxpayers, and her customers or business. And as a vet, veteran myself, I find this highly despicable. And like I said, I tried to talk to Joanne. I tried to email her, talk to her privately about this. I tried to schedule a meeting with her scheduler to talk about this, and I was completely ignored for over a year. That's why I had to go through the trouble of filing a FOIA request to find out everything she told the Portland Mercury was a lie, all of it. Thank you.
All right. Obviously, Commissioner Hardesty didn't want to respond. We'll just leave it there. Next individual, please. Item number 841.
Thank you, Mayor.
Request of Cameron Warren to address council regarding vandalism and lack of parking enforcement in northeast Portland.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay. My name is Cameron Warren Jr., and I own and operate Three Oaks Development Company in northeast Portland. I'm here today to bring to your attention the lack of parking enforcement in northeast Portland, specifically on northeast Sumner Street, and the brazen theft and vandalism that's happening there. This area has recently become the home to all sorts of vehicles, cars, RV campers, trailers. No parking signs are all on display along Sumner Street, but for weeks and months, these vehicles are allowed to park without consequence. Northeast Summer Street has had a mobile chop shop operating there. My business is providing space for those who want to provide valuable services to the community of Park Rose. In the last few weeks, Park Rose Plaza, 24,000-square-foot retail building, has repeatedly been robbed. Columbia Bank, Good World Chinese Restaurant, Salon Services, Columbia River Dentistry, and Hutwood Cabinets. My tenants all have experienced vandalism, broken windows, damaged doors, and theft of their products. In the case of Columbia Bank, a night deposit was ripped from the building with chains and a pickup truck. Last month, the dentist working in the building had his pickup truck stolen at 4:30 in the afternoon. The city is also being robbed. The economic damage caused by the council's lack of action is immediate, but also long-lasting. Two of the businesses that used to lease in this building, a computer store and the cabinet shop, have left and moved to Washington State. The reason given me is their customers complained they didn't feel safe. Summers and tax dollars that have left Portland may never return. When there's no accountability for those that ignore the law, and when those who work and live nearby cannot feel safe, and when law-abiding, revenue-generating businesses decide that Park Rose is no longer a safe place to operate, we're all robbed. Sadly, our police force has become vilified because the leadership from the top has failed to lead in a consistent manner. Security cameras caught one of the thieves breaking into Park Rose Plaza, and the policeman who worked in the case told me he knows the individual, that he has arrested him several times, once for arson. Is this person allowed to inflict more harm on the community? I have the utmost respect for police and their role in our city, but a once-vibrant area, serving the people who have worked and lived near Park Rose, are now becoming the victims due to the lack of action by the city. The city can be compassionate for those less fortunate, but when there's no accountability that is required, the homeless become seen as criminals, and criminals invade their space to take advantage. Police need your support, and PBOT needs to step up and enforce the rules. We need some leaders to step up and reverse this decline. These are tough times, and solutions are not easy, but we need leaders to act.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Warren. Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Point of order.
Commissioner Hardesty, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. There was a gentleman, Mr. Philip Tobias, a good friend of Commissioner Maps, who just recently put a lot of falsehoods on the public record. I want to be really clear. I am very proud of my military service, and the only one on this council who's actually served in the U.S. Navy, or any military for that matter. And it's really appalling to have people come into these chambers and try to use communication to vilify someone who has served their country well and continue to serve my community well. You know, I will debate any public policy issue, but it is not my responsibility to unprove lies and misinformation. People should actually do their own homework and not listen to political opportunists who think they may actually know more about a black woman in America than she does. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Commissioner Maps, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I wanted to address some of the issues raised by Mr. Warren. I don't know if Mr. Warren's still on the call, but if you are. Mr. Warren, I can't address the concerns you raised about PBOT. However, I do share the concerns you raise about public safety in Park Rose. I know the parking lot you are talking about. I actually happen to know all the businesses that you mentioned. I'm in essentially constant dialogue with my colleagues on council to try to get better public safety services out in Park Rose. I'm committed to maintaining that work until you and your tenants live in a safe environment. And in the meantime, if you haven't reached out to Historic Park Rose, which is a little nonprofit in your neighborhood that I suspect you know, I encourage you to maybe contact Annette and see if she has any grassroots-on-the-ground strategies for addressing the public safety concerns that you are wrangling with. And also, Mr. Warren, thank you for showing up to testify today.
Did you have a question?
No, not at all.
Oh, okay, great. And I'd like to add something there as well. We frequently hear that there is not support for public safety on this council, and I just want to gently say that that is not true. That is factually not true, based on the budgets that we have passed over the course of the last year, in addition to the public statements that members of this council have made. That being said, I am sympathetic to what Mr. Warren said about the concerns he has, and he undersold his role there. He is trying to help people on the streets. He's trying to provide a place of service for people who are trying to do the right thing out in his neighborhood, and I really applaud that. I want to thank you, Mr. Warren, for that. But I hear something very frequently that people will say, well, the city hasn't done its part because the police have arrested somebody and then rearrested them, and rearrested them, rearrested them, and rearrested them. I believe he said five times. That's what the city does. The city provides first responder services. The criminal justice system goes well beyond the Portland Police Bureau making arrests, and it extends to the prosecution, it extends to the jails, it extends to the courts, none of which are the jurisdiction of the city of Portland. So I just really want to make that clear because it's not well-known. When somebody comes back onto the street, it is extremely frustrating to the Portland Police Bureau if they have gone through the effort to make an arrest, which is often a dangerous situation for them. There's a lot of paperwork that we don't all see that's also involved. There's a lot of constitutional issues that have to be addressed, and there's cost incurred to the Portland Police Bureau when they do this. And I can only imagine the frustration that our public safety officials feel when nothing happens as a consequence of that. With regard to the encampment, we now have, we know from our most recent point in time count, we have about 700 camps spread out over 146 square miles in this city. So there are a lot of encampments. Each encampment can hold multiple individuals. Some are more problematic than others, and the one that's being described by Mr. Warren is clearly problematic. We can check and see where that is in the impact reduction program, but I assure you across this city, we are making progress and will continue to do so. And I'm sorry that we're not able to reach all of the most troublesome locations as quickly as we'd like to, and I appreciate you being here, Mr. Warren, to bring that to our attention and highlight it, and we'll see where it is in the process. Thank you for being here today. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Rubio.
And this is not about this. I just wanted to make a comment about my colleague, Commissioner Hardesty. I've known her for 20 years or more, and I just have to say, it's well-known, your leadership and your service, and I just want to thank you for your service to this country.
Thank you.
I'd like to add my thanks to Commissioner Hardesty for anybody who serves our country. Thank you for your service. And you are, and you spoke eloquently during our Veterans Day celebration. And I really appreciated that, and that was a meaningful moment for this council, and I hope for the city as well. So thank you for your service.
Thank you both for comments.
And thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for reminding us. Next individual, please. I think I'm at 8:42, if I remember correctly, Kealan.
That's correct. Request of Mandy Rose Cousins to address council regarding the state of our city.
Welcome.
It doesn't look like Mandy has joined us.
Okay, very good. 8:43, please.
Request of David Tarlo to address council regarding medians at Southeast 82nd Avenue and Southeast Division Street.
Hi, David.
Actually, I'm sitting in for David. My name is Tonwin, and I actually own a business on Southeast 82nd, and I'm just concerned, so I wanted to understand a little bit more, because I was not aware. Now, I was not aware that the meeting got put in Division as well, but I just kind of heard the news through the grapevine that it's being placed on Southeast 82nd. And I happen to own a restaurant there, and I'm just concerned, the traffic pattern, and when it's getting done, where it's getting done, and how it's getting done. I don't know anything about it, and I want to make sure that it gets out, so that our whole center, not just my business, but the, I'm in a strip mall that maybe is 10 businesses, and I'm just concerned, so please fill me in.
Does anybody want to address that? The medians?
Mayor, I will just say simply that if I were you, I would go to PBOT's website, where we are doing major improvements, because people are dying on the streets, and Division Street almost as severely as gun violence is impacting our community. We are focusing on reducing the speed of traffic in high-crash quarters, and Division certainly is at the top of that list. If you would like more info, please leave your information with the clerk, the council clerk, and I'd be happy to have someone from the Portland Bureau of Transportation call you back and give you the specifics that you're looking for.
I understand about safety, and I get all that, but what I don't understand is that there's no particular data that is provided or can provide. I looked on the PDOT as well, and there's no data at all regarding the median, how much it saves, how it saves lives. In some instances, I see that I'm driving on Division, it's actually more endangerment than it is, but is there anybody...
So, this is the communication, so you get to talk for three minutes, and then we get to direct you to people that can answer more questions. If, again, we're not going to have a dialogue today about what's happening, but what you asked me for is how you could get information about the project on Division, and I've given you the avenue to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That completes communications. If I'm correct, did the consent agenda, have any items been pulled? Kealan?
Yes, we've had one item pulled, 8:50.
8:50. Any other items been pulled?
No.
Please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Consent agenda is adopted to the first-time certain item, please. Number 844.
Declare intent to initiate local improvement district formation proceedings to construct street, sidewalk, and stormwater improvements in the southeast 89th Avenue and Taylor Street Local Improvement District.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. This... I'm sorry. Good. Thank you, Mayor. This is your partnership...
This is a partnership in the policy of the act, in terms of efforts to improve critical urban infrastructure in East Portland. The most recent example being the successful partnership between Montevilla and Doral's municipal blocks of Ray and Frontiers Gate and Mill. Berrydale Park, that will include a new skateboarding area and other improvements that the community identified during the July 2021 community engagement period.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Will you make sure your mic is on? We can't hear you.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Too many buttons and, you know? All right, okay, I'm back. So Berrydale Park will include a new skateboarding area and other improvements that the community identified during the July 2021 community engagement period, including site pathways, lighting, and a new playground as part of Park's efforts to bring first-rated recreational facilities to community members of East Portland. P-Bot is pleased to partner with Parks and potentially residential property owners to eliminate missing sidewalk gaps in this area of the Montevilla neighborhood. New curb ramps will be built by this LID, eliminating accessibility barriers to multiple residents of the area who use mobility devices to get around. We have with us today Andrew Albee, who will walk us through the resolution, as well as staff from Portland Parks and Recreation, who can answer questions about the park project. Andrew, take it away.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hardesty. Andrew Abbey, Local Improvement District Administrator. It's a pleasure to be with City Council this morning. Kealan, can we go ahead and switch to the presentation, please? Thank you. If we can move to the next slide, please. So before I get into the specifics of Berrydale Park and Southeast 89th and Taylor, we've done a number of these partnerships over the years between Parks and P-Bot and the various communities served by Parks and P-Bot, and I thought it might be helpful to, you know, take a moment to explain to council how we got here. So I had not been at the city very long, back in 2007, when Parks built a new Park, Holly Farm Park in Southwest Portland, not far from Markham Elementary School, and also the Capitol Hill Branch Library. So what happened on that particular project from Parks is they went ahead and built Holly Farm Park. There was not a engagement or communication, three-way communication between Parks, P-Bot, and the community about the planned park improvements and the infrastructure, the street and stormwater infrastructure around the park. So in a nutshell, what happened here back in 2007, is Park just went ahead and built their own frontage improvements, but the folks across the street who had been maintaining their gravel shoulder and dealing with stormwater issues for years never had the opportunity to piggyback on that Park's frontage improvement to get their frontages improved as well. So what happened as a result of that moving forward is that P-Bot and Parks were much more intentional about engaging the community about these types of projects. I mean, the key thing here is we can't be in silos. We can't have the P-Bot silo and the Park silo. We've got to work together, and then both of our bureaus need to work with the community. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of the Berrydale Park improvements that are planned. I have Travis Rubal with us today, and he is available to answer any questions you might have about the planned park improvements. Suffice to say, you can see from this slide that this is going to be a really nice amenity in East Portland, which historically has been underserved, not only by street improvements, but also by park improvements as well. Next slide, please. So here's kind of a chronological recap of the successful partnerships that we've had over the years. So if council were to approve this LID, and I want to be really clear with council, your vote today is not to actually form the LID. Your vote today is simply to initiate LID formation proceedings, and we know that we have some questions and issues to work through, and we are fully committed to doing that. If you approve the resolution today, we will bring this LID back on November 30th, and we'll have more of an opportunity to delve into some of the questions and concerns that have been raised by the community. But I really want to stress here that we have had some extremely successful partnerships between P-Bot, Parks, and the community. Northeast 52nd Avenue and Alberta Street LID, Coombe Mox Park, Southwest Dolphins Bring Garden LID, and Southwest Portland Bring Garden Park, Northeast 47th Avenue LID in the Cully Neighborhood. That was a monster of a project. Council closed it out earlier this year. So we are here today to consider 89th and Taylor and Berrydale Park. I do want to be really clear with council that we have structured this LID, that Parks pays the lion's share of the LID cost, and if council approves this LID with a residential component, the residential owners are only paying the marginal cost of adding a curb and a sidewalk on their side of the street. Next slide, please. So I wanted to show council this slide because this really gets to the root of the dilemma that we have here from an infrastructure standpoint. And let me preface that by saying that all the easy street improvements got built years ago. So all the stuff around the city that's remaining, virtually all of it is really, really difficult from an engineering point of view, and this is no exception. So what you have here, you can see that Berrydale Park has three non-contiguous frontages, two on Taylor and two on 89th. From P-Bot's point of view, we didn't think it made sense for Parks to just simply go build their frontage improvements with all those gaps where you see the orange properties on the east side of 89th and the south side of Taylor. We just didn't think that that made sense from a default standing point. And then you look at those properties on the west side of 89th, and I'll show you some additional slides here in a minute, but what I really want council to know is this is not a new issue that was uncovered in the past year as a part of the outreach that Parks had on their park improvements. So what happened here is Parks held some listening sessions with the community on new park improvements, and in the course of those discussions, Parks heard from the community that there was interest in fixing the street problems. Park, to their credit, referred those issues and concerns to me, and that's why we're here today to consider the LID. I would also share with council that there was a previous LID effort, and I'm not exactly sure when it was, but I think it was about 40 years ago. So there have been on-and-off requests for street improvements in this neighborhood for easily 40 years. And so this is a one-time opportunity to do a partnership and do this much less expensively. I will tell you that right now I'm petitioning another LID in Northwest Portland with no sidewalks, and the cost of that LID is more than double per property what we're looking at here. So this is the real opportunity to buy the improvements on sale for the residential property owners. Next slide, please. So this is a picture that a neighborhood resident took a few days ago. She's driving east on Taylor Street, and lo and behold, right in front of her windshield is a mom walking with her child. That mother uses a vision cane because she's visually impaired, and she's walking out in the middle of the street because vision cans don't work really well on mud and dirt and not hard surfaces. So she's out there as a vulnerable mother with a vulnerable child out there in the street because there's no sidewalk that leads up to Berrydale Park. Next slide, please. So here's a slide of what Taylor Street looks like. We are not proposing to do anything with respect to the pavement there, east of 89th. We just simply want to add a sidewalk along the south side of Taylor Street so people have a sidewalk to safely get to the park. I will tell you where this picture was taken. We had a community meeting last month, and we had really good turnout in the community. And as we were discussing the potential of an LID, I heard a blood-curdling scream behind me, and there was, I believe it was a young girl who had wiped out on the street there, and I think she skinned her knee or something, but it was a pretty tangible reminder that kids need safe places to be, and a safe place for a young child to learn how to ride a bike or do whatever she was doing is not in the middle of the street. It would be on a sidewalk, and you can see there's speed bumps on the street, so that's already evident that we have pretty good traffic volumes on this street, and we have pretty high speeds on this street as well. Next slide, please. And then this is a view of 89th Avenue. If this LID is approved, actually irrespective of whether the LID is approved or not, if council for some reason doesn't approve this LID, then Parks would default to a public works process to do their street improvement. But in either case, that head-end parking will go away, and that mud and dirt you see along 89th will go away, and there will be a fully reconstructed street with curbs and stormwater drainage and a sidewalk along the east side of 89th Avenue if council approves this LID. There would also be a sidewalk built on the west side of 89th Avenue. That is a change. I want to be very transparent with council, but that is a change from what our initial assumptions were. And so we are now proposing to build sidewalks on both sides of the street. Next slide, please. And here's another view of 89th Avenue. You can see the pothole there on the right side of the picture, the standing water. You know, that is where pedestrians walk to get to the park and to Clark Elementary School, which if you were standing here where I took the picture, Park Elementary School is right behind you. So, you know, fundamentally, when I was out here, I looked at this, and I said, "This is not the kind of infrastructure or lack thereof that we want for parents and children who are trying to walk to the school or walk to the park." Next slide, please. I think that's my last slide, if I'm not mistaken, yeah. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to turn it over to council and answer any questions you might have. I suspect council will have some questions for me after the testimony, and I'm happy to come back after that testimony and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Commissioner Hardesty.
I was just going to thank him and turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Very good. Yeah, Andrew, thank you. Great presentation, as always. Colleagues, any questions? Commissioner Ryan has a question.
Thank you, Andrew, for, that was a great presentation, and thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for bringing this forward. I think for me, it's always trying to understand the heaviness of the bill, if you will, to the people that live in the neighborhood. So it's 165 for 20 years, correct, to pull this off? So is there a, if you're, okay, say you're elderly and you're on fixed income, and is there any clauses? Is there any relief for somebody in that situation so they don't suddenly have more burden on them with their fixed income?
You're on mute, Andrew.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I clicked, but I clicked a little bit to the left, and so I didn't really click. So, yeah, Commissioner Ryan, that's a great question. So Oregon law says that when we do these LIDs, we have to do them based on special benefits of property, not based on ability to pay. That's in the Oregon Constitution, so we can't do this like an income tax where, you know, if you make more money than you pay more to somebody than somebody who makes less money. But let me just say a couple of things. Number one is approaching this LID, we worked very, very hard to structure this LID like we did the recently completed Southeast 80th and Mill LID. And so the assessment amounts, or the estimated assessment amounts are at the same level as what we did for Southeast 80th and Mill. I want to emphasize, it's been, I think it's been five years since we started 80th and Mill. Those amounts are the same, unadjusted for inflation. So notwithstanding the construction inflation and everything else we've been seeing, we worked really, really hard. So our goal on this was to bring in the cost so that it would be on par with 80th and Mill. And what was not in the council document, but to your point, Commissioner Ryan, I have talked internally with P-Bot finance staff, and we were planning to do this anyway, but I want to be clear with council that it would be our intent that if council were to approve this resolution today, that we would bring back a formation ordinance, but also bring back an ordinance that would authorize a five-year deferral of the LID assessments when imposed. So realistically, if a property owner were to utilize that deferral, they'd be looking to seven to eight years out. We find there's a pretty high property ownership turnover rate, and people generally speaking usually don't have a problem selling their properties when they have a nice new street in front of them, they have a more liquid investment with their house. And we've seen that before, and that is the outcome that we would be seeking to achieve here. And we do want to be sensitive to folks that have financial constraints. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
So, Andrew, I think I understood what you said. I hear about the Oregon Constitution and all of the details with that, but I still don't understand if someone's either a disability or they're seniors on fixed income, that, and they've lived there, say, 20 years, that, you know, every little dollar of fixed burden is challenging. So is there any hardship waiver that we could work on?
We don't have the ability, Commissioner Ryan...
As of the Constitution?
Right. We don't have the ability to make somebody's assessment go away. We do have the ability to defer the payment of that assessment and better match up the timing of that obligation when they might eventually be selling their property. And I think the other thing that's important to note, Commissioner Ryan, is I do get a lot of phone calls from people around the city who are trying to sell their home or they want to purchase a home, and maybe you've got horrendous potholes on the street like you saw in the picture. I mean, I have had conversations with people that have difficulty selling their home because of the condition of the street out in front. So, you know, imagine for a minute this LID weren't here. You could have a situation where somebody might have more difficulty selling their home. You know, maybe they need to move, move into a retirement home, whatever, and they're relying on selling their home to get that capital gain. So when we do these street improvements, it does help the liquidity of the property that they own. I'm not suggesting that people couldn't sell their home, but it's easier and quicker usually to sell your home when you have an improved street out in front as opposed to not having it.
Okay.
Bottom line, Commissioner, is we will work with these property owners. It is fully our intent to be sensitive to their situation and to develop a referral program that will be a safety net for them. I appreciate the question.
Thanks. And our follow-up will be focused exactly on those people. I'm not disputing that this will be great for their equity and their income and their ability to sell the home. It's just those specific hardships that do exist in that neighborhood. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Hardesty, then Commissioner Maps?
Not Commissioner Maps, though.
Commissioner Maps?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Andrew, this is, this question isn't about the lid before us today. It's more about the general policy space of lids. Intuitively, I hear the argument that you're making that having a sidewalk and a proper street in front of your house essentially increases the property value of your house. I would, as a policymaker, I'd really appreciate having a study sometime soon to take a look at how some of our past lids have changed property values compared to comps. I don't think that would be that difficult to pull together, but I think it sure would be helpful to council as we make choices like that. And I know we have people in the room to testify, or I suspect we have people in the room to testify on this, so I'm eager to hear from those folks, too. So I'll lower my hand until perhaps after public testimony.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Andrew. Andrew, I just wanted to ask, I think Commissioner Ryan raised a good question, and could you just tell us typically lids are between businesses by any area for infrastructure improvements? And sometimes they include residential properties just because of where we're doing them. I would say that this community would not be satisfied if we put in a big, beautiful park that people had to go through mud and a lack of sidewalks and still walk in the street to access. So I'm curious, Andrew, if you could tell me kind of what is the percentage that actually includes residential when we do these local improvement districts? Is that normal, that there are residential households involved?
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, and I'll just briefly respond to Commissioner Maps' comment, say, yes, I have a lot of work I've done on the whole question of increases in property value, so I'd be happy to follow up on that with Commissioner Maps. To your question, Commissioner Hardesty, we have never had a broad-based funding source for LIDs as long as I've been here at the city. I want to be really clear, though, that notwithstanding that, we've worked really, really hard to bring some P-Bot funding to the table to minimize that burden as much as possible. And I can't stress this enough, this project is on sale. I'm not going to be able to get to zero with these property owners, but we have been very thoughtful about cobbling together two different funding sources in P-Bot as well as Park contribution to the LID to try to keep that burden to a minimum. I wish it were zero. I wish it were zero. I wish it were a lot closer to zero. I just can't, I can't get there. To your point, Commissioner Hurdisty, because there's not a broad-based funding source with LIDs, I tend to have a lot of LIDs that have more of a commercial component to them, but therein is the problem. We have people in neighborhoods like East Portland that are dealing with the issues that you saw on the slides. And when the opportunities come up, I try to be very creative and come up with a solution that'll work. So I just want to be really clear with council. I don't define success here, whether council forms or does not form the LID. I felt that my mission here was to be responsive to the community and put a solution on the table. If council in the end decides not to approve this LID, I'm fine with that, but I just felt that we needed to put together all our brain power, engineering-wise and finance-wise, to just put together a proposal that would solve these problems. And beyond that, it's going to be a policy decision for council to approve or amend or not form the LID.
Andrew, I just want to thank you and the really hard-working staff at PBOB who continues to really be creative and innovative and opportunists when we see an opportunity to leverage our limited transportation dollars. And so, Mayor, I'm going to turn it back over to you. I'm looking forward to public testimony and then we can figure out next steps.
Very good. Kealan, how many people do we have signed up?
We have six people.
Very good. Three minutes each, name for the record. Kealan will call you in turn.
First up, we have Rena Clements.
Welcome.
Good morning, council. My name is Rena Clements and I and my neighbor Tracy are here today testifying against the proposed 89th and Taylor LID on behalf of 13 out of 15 houses included in this LID. All 13 of these houses are on or adjacent to Southeast 89th. When this council agenda was posted late last week, we learned that in July, a memorandum was sent from PPR to the LID administrator requesting formation of the LID. The city LID website states that LIDs can be formed if petitions are received representing more than 50% of benefiting property owners. The homeowners aren't sure what classifies as 50% support considering PPR's assessment is based on square footage and homeowner assessment is based on equal share, and we have no idea whether our houses do or do not have waivers. No neighbor we've talked to has ever signed a petition in support. We were not asked for support and this project is being planned irrespective of the financial situations of the neighbors. As stated in the written testimony we submitted, several homeowners on our street are retired and on fixed income and cannot afford the financial burden of this LID. By moving forward with this project without impacted homeowner input, we feel that the city may carelessly drive some of our neighbors into houselessness or other housing insecurities. We shouldn't force people to sell their homes because of the LID. The initial mailer we received about this project stated that improvements were being looked at between 89th and Main, and the second mailer stated that the sidewalks and improvements would stop on the south side of my own property. This is corroborated by the map in exhibit C. 89th is in disrepair and without sidewalks for far more than the scope of the proposed LID. Our future LIDs planned will be responsible for more payments on top of this one. We aren't sure how improving 89th in smaller chunks will minimize disruption when homeowners will then have to deal with the extended construction of multiple projects. Furthermore, if sidewalks and street improvements benefit the greater neighborhood, including safe school routes, we are confused, one, why more homes in the neighborhood are not being asked to pay, and two, why the plan as proposed doesn't even include sidewalks directly adjacent to school property on 89th. Instead, the sidewalks would stop mid-road, leaving a significant chunk of the road with unresolved infrastructural issues and without sidewalks. Leaving infrastructure gaps on 89th seems counterproductive to the goal of the project to improve infrastructure gaps. 89th north of Hawthorne, as the photo Andrew included in the presentation earlier, is actually not in scope of the proposed LID. Finally, several longtime residents on our street have stated that in 1995, there was an LID to dig up 89th in order to connect the houses to the sewer system and the street was subsequently reconstructed poorly at that time, leading to the infrastructure deficits we see today. The homeowners are not interested in paying to fix the city's mistakes from 30 years ago. The overwhelming majority of neighbors, including in this LID, meaning specifically those financial obligation, are not in support of the project as currently proposed. We urge you to vote against this project as currently proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hurdisty, do you have a hand raised? No, very good. Next individual, please, Kealan.
Next up, we have Tracy Zapf.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning, members of city council. My name is Tracy Zapf and I'm here to testify against the proposed Southeast 89th Avenue and Taylor Street LID. As you may be aware, I, along with my neighbors, first found out about this project through a mailer received in late August. In the mailer, there was no mention of an LID or cost to residents, simply that they wanted to get our input on addressing infrastructure deficiencies and that our feedback would guide this work. Imagine our surprise, then, when we showed up at the meeting and found out that a plan was already decided and that we would be responsible for paying for it at a price tag of about $24,000 per house. At the meeting, we also learned that we really had no choice in the matter because Portland Parks and Rec could move the LID forward regardless of our support. I would like you to be aware that the majority of the back-and-forth dialogue at this meeting was with folks who aren't a part of this LID and anyone that expressed obvious interest was also not a member of the LID, including two women speaking after me today. We polled those neighbors actually included in the LID and 86% of the 15 houses, or 14 houses, the number keeps changing, are strongly against the LID as it stands. This project began in misinformation and it appears to continue in misinformation. Facts that were shared at the community meeting have since changed and nothing has been shared in writing outside of the initial ambiguous mailer and the second mailer stating inaccurately interest from property owners. One example of this inaccurate information is the addition of sidewalks to the west side. Sorry, lost my spot. One example of this misinformation is the addition of sidewalks to the west side of 89th due to interest from property owners. We spoke with all of our neighbors on 89th included in the LID and not one house on the west side of 89th has expressed interest in sidewalks. And that's not because we don't like sidewalks and we don't want students to have a safe pathway to get to their school. Believe me, as a local public school educator, the safety of our children means the world to me. But these sidewalks can't come at such a heavy financial burden to our neighbors. $24,000 is no small amount of money and for some of the folks in the LID, this debt would be devastating. We agree that sidewalks would be helpful on our street and would benefit everyone in the neighborhood, particularly those families attending the neighborhood school. So then why aren't more folks being invited to chip in on this project? Andrew himself stated that there's lots of interest in improvement and we just need to make sure everyone is together to share costs. Why then are only 15 houses being asked to cover the residential costs of this project? We are concerned about the misinformation and lack of voice we've been given in this process. We are concerned about the cost of this project and what the debt means for many of our neighbors. And we are honestly concerned that PBOB is using smoke and mirrors to confuse us into silence. We, the residents of the LID, advise you to vote against this project as it currently stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Next individual, please.
Next up, we have Gina Gastaldi.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hi, commissioners. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Gina Gastaldi. Full disclosure, I'm a city employee. However, I'm providing testimony in a personal capacity. I had no influence over the LID, the formation of the LID, any of the selection of the properties or any of the assessments. I am here to testify in favor of improvements in Montevilla and East Portland in general. I'm a mother of two school-aged children. I'm adjacent to this project, but not within the LID itself. And I just want my two children to be able to walk safely to the new park, the skate park, this new neighborhood amenity that we're going to be getting, and to the school and not have to walk in the street and in mud puddles. In addition to Berrydale Park, the existing Creative Science School is being converted to a neighborhood school with hundreds of students in the neighborhood transitioning to this new neighborhood school in fall of 2023. It's currently a charter school, so most students are driven and it's being converted to a neighborhood public school next year. This will likely result in many more students who will be able to walk and within that walk shed of the school. And I'm sure, as you know, between 82nd Avenue and 92nd Avenue from Stark to Division, there is no north-south street with a complete sidewalk corridor. So while this project wouldn't complete that sidewalk corridor along all of 89th, it's a start and could hopefully leverage some future funding. Thank you for considering this proposal. I really advocate for more funding for much-needed sidewalk improvements, lighting and street trees in Montevilla and other East Portland neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your being here.
Next up, we have Sarah Buxton.
Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Commissioner Hurdisty, I learned this morning that you are from Baltimore. My husband's family is from Baltimore. We've spent many time there, so, or a lot of time there. So for the public record, I would like to say, let's go Os. Ah, this is Desmond. Yes, he is my fourth child, so. Good morning, council, and thank you for hearing me and my neighbors about this proposed LID. I am here to voice support and, yes, for full transparency, I am not a property owner in the proposed LID, unfortunately. I am two blocks south on 89th, just south of Hawthorne. I wish I was in the LID and I would vote in full favor of it. I know that you all care about our city very much. That's why you are here. And I also know that if we had unlimited funds, that we'd see sidewalks all over the place, but that's not the reality. And so I am here to tell you why I think 89th is a great and important place to start. As you've heard, 89th is not only frontage to the new Berrydale Park, which we are very, very excited about, thank you, but it is the back entrance to the elementary school that's right there on 92nd and Taylor. As Gina said, this school is currently a charter school, but it is being reverted next year to a neighborhood school. And I, my kiddos go to the neighborhood school, which is currently Harrison Park, K through eight. And I pass a parent every day who's walking her kiddo to Creative Science while I'm walking mine to Harrison Park. And I told her about the proposed sidewalks and she very soberly told me, you know, I've been walking my kids here for years and I've always said that it's when a kiddo gets hit by a car is when the city is going to put in sidewalks. So as a parent of four, who I will put all of them through the neighborhood school because I am committed to bettering our neighborhood schools and not using my privilege to pull them out and put them elsewhere, I'm asking you to please, please not let that happen where a kiddo gets hit and then we decide to solve this problem. And lastly, I just want to say that I am also a foster parent and so I have kids of all ages and unique needs in my house at all times. Going to the park and burning off energy is a vital, vital part of caring well for a child. And I, kids in care tend to have unique needs. Currently, two of my kiddos who are from care both have ADHD and very low impulse control. So as you can imagine, walking to school with our city's kids, our community's kids, can be very scary. And I would like to teach them how to scoot and ride their bikes and all these things that are greatly, going to greatly improve their life. But I really need sidewalks to better care for our kids in our community. And again, I wish that I was in this proposed LID and I would say yes. But I'm downstream, so hopefully y'all approve this one and then I'll be included in the next one. That's my hope.
Awesome. Thank you for being here today. We appreciate it. Next individual, please, Kealan.
Next up, we have Donna Pluta.
Hi, Donna.
It doesn't look like Donna's here. Next up, we have Stuart Heath.
Stuart, are you with us?
Yes.
Great.
Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear and we can see you as well.
Awesome. Thank you guys for having me. Like Gina and the previous participant, I am not in the LID. Full disclosure, I used to work for Bureau of Development Services. I no longer do as of two months ago, so I have no involvement in the formation of this or any process beyond living in the area. I live at 8711 on Taylor and I use a manual wheelchair full-time to get around. For the people voting against this, I would really like you to envision yourself being forced to be in the street, not being able to get up curbs when it comes to navigating your neighborhood that you love and care for. I know some of you guys voting against this probably see me on the street watering my lawn, talking to you guys as neighbors. I know you do care about the neighborhood, but I would like you to think about those with disabilities who have no input on the world around us that disables us further. And it's, it's built-up environment like this. It's low lighting, it's potholes, it's everything that this LID would improve. Granted, it wouldn't be a blanket fix for everything, but nothing that we propose is going to fix everything overnight. There's always going to be something wrong with it. We need to start somewhere. This is a great place to start. And if you care about the environment that we live, about our children, about their access to the park, I think this would be a great start. I would like to contribute to this. I don't have an option to, being that I don't live within it. But that being said, like the previous participant, I will happily participate when it comes further downstream. Since I've lived in this neighborhood, it's been very difficult to get around. I can go for a few blocks on the sidewalk. There may be a curb cut, but more than likely, I'm either going to hop the curb and go up a driveway. And if I want to go to the park, from my neighborhood, I need to go all the way to 92nd, make a right, go on 92nd in the street all the way until I reach the actual school. Then I can get up onto the sidewalk and enter the park. So that's a good half mile of pushing in the road. Hopefully I don't get hit by a car and hopefully it's really well-lit while I'm doing it. So thank you guys for your time. I appreciate all you do. I know you have incredibly hard jobs and, yeah, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Stuart. We appreciate your being here today. Very good. Colleagues, any further questions? Commissioner Hurdisty.
I want to thank all the community members who showed up to testify. Montevilla is a neighborhood that I spend a whole lot of quality time in. I walk around that neighborhood. I take public transit in the neighborhood. And I know that the city has never kept this promise about actually providing the infrastructure necessary for that community to thrive. When I became Transportation Commissioner in January of 20, what was that, 21? What I, what became clear was that the $4 billion maintenance backlog, hey, hold on, Commissioner Ryan, he loves when I say that, the $4 billion maintenance backlog that I inherited from PBOB, I mean, as PBOB Commissioner, does not cover the lack of infrastructure in my neighborhood in East Portland and many of my neighbors in East Portland. And so I know that folks who are homeowners in East Portland are terrified of being priced out and it is my hope that we, as a council, become kind of creative with this LID and figure out how do we make sure we can support low-income homeowners and also have sidewalks and infrastructure. I actually am bodacious enough to think we can do both and we can do it without overburdening low-income homeowners. And so I continue to be optimistic that this is the beginning of a process and I know Andrew and his team will work hard to come back with a proposal that I believe this council will support. And again, thank everyone for showing up to testify today, even those who didn't show up. I know that this is a hard, it's always a hard time in East Portland and it's even more so where we're now actually burdening homeowners with some of these street improvements that decades ago should have been a given and just have never materialized. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurdisty. Commissioner Maps?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew, I have three quick questions. First, just so I'm clear, is it possible for homeowners to defer the charges that come with this lid? And if so, how long can you defer these payments?
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Appreciate the opportunity to answer your question. Most LIDs do not come with a deferral. Commissioner, as we've done more and more LIDs in East Portland as of recent, we've tried to be thoughtful about providing a safety net for residential property owners. So that is why, although we don't normally offer deferral, that is why if council approves this resolution today and we come back on November 30th, council will not only consider an ordinance to actually form the LID, but council will also have an ordinance to authorize a deferral. And then at that time, I can provide you more information. I also have some ideas on the financial structure of the LID and I'm not going to get into the weeds of that today. That's a conversation I need to have with my finance colleagues, but suffice to say that my brain is churning away. I'm processing all the input that I've received from folks and there's a bunch of engineering issues and finance issues that I'm fully prepared to take a look at those and then bring something back to council in November. I would not expect a major overhaul of this LID, just given I, I would not expect a major overhaul of this LID, just given the physical realities of the lack of infrastructure here, but I do think there's some tweaks and adjustments that we can make to, uh, be responsive to the concerns that have been communicated.
Uh, great, Andrew, that's very helpful. Uh, my second question, and I think you kinda answered it in the first, is that, is this. If council votes yes, um, on this item today, um, do you still have the ability to work with neighbors to try to develop, uh, a lid that fits this particular neighborhood? Negoti- will negotiations and dialogue with, if we vote yes today, I, I get the impression there will be ongoing, uh, conversations with neighbors, uh, to try to figure out a way to make this, uh, lid work and meet, uh, address some of the concerns that were raised today. Is that correct?
Um, there's always ongoing dialogue, Commissioner. I mean, and I, I do wanna be clear on a couple of things. Number one, as if council approves this resolution today, council's of course under no obligation to actually form the LID on November 30th. So if you don't like what I bring back, then council has the full prerogative and power to simply vote down the LID. When it comes back on November 30th, I will tell you that we will want to do something in this neighborhood, so, uh, you're not gonna get a recommendation from me to do nothing. It's just a question of to what extent do we amend the LID or, or tweak the LID. If council does give final approval to the LID when it come back, we continue that dialogue after LID formation. So, uh, I, I don't want council to get the impression that just because we form an LID, we stop talking to the property owners. So the formation of the LID as a starting point is definitely not an ending point.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and my last question, um, first, I'm delighted to hear that you've already kinda dug into, um, the impact that LIDs have on, uh, property values. Um, I look forward to getting your research on that. Um, and I recognize you did, you might not have this information in front of you today, but is it generally, um, how likely is it that, uh, uh, that the, um, increases in home values that are a result of this lid are greater than the, um, out-of-pocket cost to homeowners? In the end, like over a 20-year period, should we expect people to come out ahead? Or are homeowners actually kind of really subsidizing, um, our infrastructure here?
Uh, Commissioner Maps, um, I'm, I'm an economist by training, forgive me, I didn't have the personality to become an accountant. Um, I, 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 I wanna really not be on record and predict a, you know, specific outcome in terms of what the property values may be, but let me give you one anecdotal example. The very first LID I worked on at the city of Portland was Southeast 119th and Pine.
Yep.
And we had a lot of people who were, this was a few blocks, by the way, from the 122nd Avenue MAC station, there have been to our school on the other side. I had all kinds of people coming to me who were really worried about, um, you know, the obligation of the LID. And by the way, yes, we did offer a deferral back then, thanks to what was then the Bureau of Housing and Community Development. Long story short, when we got, uh, the LID done, uh, people, we had seniors that needed to sell their homes anyway because they needed to move into assisted living or whatever. You know, we offered up this deferral and nobody took advantage of it because people just had no problem selling their home. But I also wanna be really clear that we're in an interesting macroeconomic environment. And, you know, it is possible that the rate of housing appreciation will slow, maybe even go down, I don't know. So I, I, I think we do have to separate out the macroeconomic factors here, you know, the general things like interest rates and other things. And then there's the specific factors on your individual street. So I, I don't wanna sit here and promise a specific return on investment. I will just say, over time, there's been a pretty steady increase in property values because we don't have any more land in the Portland area and land is scarce, and that's why housing's expensive. They're just, this is supply and demand thing. So I'm very confident that if somebody took out a 20-year, uh, financing contract, that over time, there's gonna be an increase over a longer period of time, uh, where they can get a return on their LID investment. Will it be dollar for dollar? I don't know. Uh, you know, there's the, the capital return component, but there's also the neighborhood livability component. And, you know, maybe they don't recover every dollar that they pay into the LID, but they get a benefit. They don't have a gravel shoulder to maintain, they don't have a lake of water in front of their house, their kids can walk to school, so there's a benefit to that. But there's also a cost to that as well. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Andrew. I appreciate that nuanced, uh, response. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have no more questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Andrew, um, I'm back because we both got to listen to some testimony. And you can only imagine, I wanted to just loop back with you and have a little bit of dialogue. Uh, my concern is not about the value that this will offer to numerous people, th- those who live near and those who are downstream, as the testimony said. And it was especially compelling to hear somebody who must, uh, roll, roll in their, their wheelchair to get around and they need safety. So I think that all of, I mean, I would like to see this, uh, these improvements done. I think what was compelling when you listened to the testimony is whether it's 14 or 15 households are taking on all the burden, though if I was doing an auction, I'm like, oh, good, we have like three more people that say they'll pay. So tell me, educate me on the rules of, of who is involved in an LID, like, could it expand? I, I just think we have to listen to what the testimony just said. And then, um, you know, would, I'm sure the people that are here today, if they were included, 'cause it's expanded two more blocks, um, and they say that they'll pay, would the burden then come down? I just need to understand, because again, one of my passions is to keep people placed for their lifetime. And when people are elderly and on fixed income, $124 a month is a big deal. And so I just wanna hear more. And I don't even know who the 14 households are, but we heard from two of them today, and they said 85% were against it.
So, Commissioner Ryan, let me first answer a question you didn't ask, which is, I will bring back a deferral ordinance on November 30th. And I wanna be clear with council, you may not like what's in the deferral ordinance. Well, you know, we may, we may not get to the end zone, it may be first and goal, but we didn't score the touchdown. Okay, so I'm gonna do my best to bring the best possible deferral ordinance to council on November 30th. You may not like it, in which case council should amend the LID or do, do something different than what I recommend. I just, I can't stress this enough. My starting point is let's solve the physical infrastructure problem. If we can't get to a price point that works, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to put a solution in front of council. To your other point, Commissioner, here, here's the problem with Montevilla. I didn't show you a map, but you start going past this LID, there is street after street after street where I've gotten complaints. I mean, my phone rings so much from Montevilla, it's, it's unbelievable. I mean, uh, Gina mentioned in her testimony, we don't have any good street between 92nd and 82nd. So you have block after block after block of street that don't cut it in terms of infrastructure. We start getting into a slippery slope when we ask somebody down the street to help pay for this one, because at some point, maybe it's after I retire, but somebody else in the city's gonna be having a conversation about another LID a block away or whatever. And so we really try to avoid putting people in double jeopardy situations of, hey, pay for this LID, and then turn around and, oh, we're gonna charge you for another LID down the line, but we can't tell you when it's gonna come and how much it's gonna be. So I'm, I'm a little reluctant to sort of cast the net wider and pull more people into an LID for that reason. Let me do the best I can, Commissioner Ryan, to try to work on this deferral option. I mean, I can't stress this enough, I have people in other parts of the city that would kill to have this option offered to them. And I understand that you've heard testimony from people who aren't loving the, what I've offered up to them, and that's fine, I don't take this personally, but I just gotta put this into perspective. This is a much lower-cost LID than the conversations I typically have around the rest of the city. So let me work on the deferral option, give it my best shot. I have some other ideas that I'll run past staff. Let me bring back what I can bring back on November 30th, and if, if we don't get it over the finish line, fine, but let me just give it my best shot, Commissioner.
Andrew, if I could ask a question here. So just so I understand the, the order of affairs going forward. So the resolution today would continue to authorize that work, then you come back in November for the final approval of the LID, is that correct?
It is correct, Mayor, and I would anticipate that what you'll probably see on the council's agenda is the ordinance to form the LID as is proposed, and I strongly suspect that there would be an alternative ordinance that would be offered up, and we'd probably post that on the council agenda as well. And essentially, what council would then have is a debate of, do we approve the LID as originally formed, or do we go to a Plan B? I think it's highly unlikely, I'm just gonna recommend that you terminate the whole thing and do nothing. So I think it's gonna probably be a choice for council between the full-mill deal and a medium deal.
Right. I, I, and I, I, you know, I, I don't wanna presume, uh, that if I'm hearing my colleagues correctly, and I'll, I'll throw myself into the mix, I think we all support the infrastructural improvements that are being discussed today. So that's, that's not in question. The question really comes down to the financing mechanism and who pays and how broad that base goes. And I heard what you said, so I won't make you repeat all of it. I appreciate your, your, uh, your attempts here to balance competing interests. Uh, I do just wanna put on the record that this LID is fundamentally different than the others that I have seen over the course of the last nearly six years, in that it is a significant public good improvement for everyone in the area. This isn't just about patching potholes or building sidewalks on a side street, as so many of our LIDs are, where we're approached by neighbors who say, we'd really like to do this, can the city help us get to yes on this? This is fundamentally different because you have, uh, a, um, a, a collector, if you will. This is a collector area because it's immediately adjacent to, you know, a park and park improvements, and it's on the routes to school and everything else. So that there is a broad public interest and a broad public benefit to this LID, but it has the attributes of a typical LID in its current configuration in that it is, the cost is borne by a relatively small number of households in that area. And that's, that's what we're all struggling with here today. And again, I heard you, and I, I heard you say you'll take a sharper look at this, and I appreciate that and I support that. But I just wanted to put that on the record as well, that, that this LID feels a little different to me than what I've seen in the past. Commissioner Hardesty.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You're absolutely right. I think the big difference is the strong partnership between parks and PBOT, understanding that this park improvement will actually significantly make this community more desirable, right? And remembering that this is a part of the city where we've neglected the trees, the sidewalks, the lighting, all that good stuff. Um, so I think, I am so proud that Andrew thinks so far out of the box, um, sometimes because, you know, it's easy at the city to get used to doing things the way we've always done it, because that's the way we've always done it. And I have confidence that Andrew will go back, based on the conversation we've had today, and we will put our heads together to be as creative as we possibly can be, understanding the limits of what the law allows us to do. So I thank you all. Um, colleagues, you've asked some really good questions. You've given Andrew a lot to think about, but I know Andrew well, and I know he's been actually thinking about all this stuff long before he got here. I look forward to seeing what we come back with in November, and I'm confident that we will get to yes.
Very good. Then we'll keep the process moving. Please call the role on the resolution.
Maps?
Um, I wanna thank Commissioner Hardesty for bringing this item forward, and I wanna thank everyone who testified today. Um, Andrew, um, I've worked with you on lids on many occasions over many years. I've been amazed at what you've been able to accomplish. Um, I definitely wanna give you enough room and space to, to continue to innovate in this space, uh, for these reasons and more, I vote aye.
Rubio.
Um, I wanna thank Commissioner Hardesty and PBOT again for bringing this forward, and also thank Andrew for diligently answering all the questions put before him. Um, and, uh, they're very thoughtful and, uh, very prepared, so I appreciate that. I also wanna thank the testifiers on all sides of this issue for sharing their comments today. Uh, the conversation was really helpful, um, because, you know, I share my, my colleagues' concerns about the cost to homeowner, homeowners. At the same time, I'm very much more concerned about ensuring, uh, road safety and preventing loss of lives in neighborhoods. Um, so I, I do believe, um, with that said, it's good to hear that Andrew's already working on a proposal related to costs, issues of cost, so I look forward to that. I think this is just the first step to open the conversation, and so for those reasons, um, I vote aye.
Ryan.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. And Andrew, that presentation was excellent, and I really, that you gave us context. And I do think the collaboration between parks and PBOT is, of course, just what's supposed to happen, so it's refreshing. Um, I, I, I think you could tell by my questioning, um, I'm a reluctant, uh, person here in terms of voting yes, um, because I think we have more work to do. I think, uh, this is complex, not the infrastructure upgrades, but the way that we are financing it. And I think we need to look a little deeper, and I'd like to see the vision forward for, um, the whole area, if there's upstream, upstream problems. So I will, uh, be a reluctant yes. Um, if it stays exactly how it is today, I'll probably be a no, um, but I look forward to dialogue with you, uh, and PBOT. And I look forward to more testimony from all of the neighbors, and I'd like to find out, um, how that engagement goes, and so we can, um, I'll get to a yes on something that I think most people would like. So, aye.
Hardesty.
I thank you again to the neighbors who showed up and testified, and thank you to all the opinions across the board. There were no, everybody wants to see the improvements, and the bottom line is how do we make it happen in a way that doesn't overburden people who are already overburdened? Um, and I wanna thank Andrew, I know he's all over it. I appreciate the very thoughtful questions that my colleagues, uh, gave today, and I'm very happy to vote aye, to continue to move this forward.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. The resolution is adopted. We'll look forward to seeing more in November. Thank you, Andrew. Next up, 8:45, a proclamation.
Proclaim October 15th, 2022 to be White cane Awareness Day.
Colleagues, interestingly, we heard about white canes earlier today in our testimony on the LAD that we just discussed. Today, we are in fact proclaiming October 15th, 2022 to be White cane Awareness Day here in the city of Portland. And with that, I'd like to invite Commissioner Hardesty to introduce this proclamation.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You're very kind. Uh, October 15th is really important to me for two reasons. The most important reason is because it is in fact White cane Day. White cane Day, uh, is a national observation in the United States to celebrate, uh, to, uh, I'm sorry, uh, all in all, white cane is a tool for safety independence. White cane Day is a day, uh, that we honor and celebrate the independence and equality of people who actually are differently able, uh, maybe using a white cane, maybe using a guide dog. Um, and the second most important thing about October 15th is it's my birthday. And so...
Yippee.
So normally, I would be at PSU with the white cane celebration on October 15th, celebrating White cane Day. Uh, and it's been one of the privileges of serving on this council, uh, that I've been able to combine two perfect opportunities together. Um, what I know is that everyone has a right to be able to move around this city freely without obstructions regardless of their mobility issues. I always say that we're all only temporarily able because, uh, but for circumstances in life, all of us can be, uh, temporarily impacted. And then we really appreciate how hard it is to travel around this city when you are not, when you don't have your full sight or your full hearing or full mobility, uh, with your body. Um, I always appreciate White cane Day so that we can take a moment and put ourselves into the shoes of someone who has to use a cane or guide dog to travel around the city. It is hard to travel around this city at any time, but when you have to use other devices to help you do that, it becomes even more so. So thank you, Mayor. Yeah, for the last three years, the mayor and I have co-sponsored this resolution, and I've had the privilege of actually being part of the celebration. So thank you, Mayor, appreciate giving me an opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. I understand we're gonna hear from Lisa, is that correct? Lisa Strater?
That is correct. And I think we also have Mary Lee Turner, who's gonna speak to us as well. We'll start with Lisa.
Thanks.
Good morning, and thank you very much, uh, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Hardesty, and councilors. I'm Lisa Strater, I'm the Portland Bureau of Transportation's ADA Coordinator, Coordinator, so Americans with Disabilities Coordinator. I'm a white woman with shoulder-length blond hair, I'm wearing a white blouse and a black cardigan today. Uh, in my job, I have the opportunity to regularly engage with community members with disabilities, and they share their perspectives of using our transportation system, which I really appreciate. As the mayor just recognized, my colleague Andrew displayed a current representation of a white cane user in, um, in our public right of way. I'm honored to be here today with a white cane user, Mary Lee Turner, who is graciously willing to share her experience with us related to the proclamation before you. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Mary Lee.
Good morning, uh, commissioners and mayor. It is...
Good morning, uh, commissioners and mayor. It is an honor to be here. I have been, I'm, my name is Mary Lee Turner, and I was born here in Portland, was, uh, among the first blind children ever admitted to Portland Public Schools. So boy, do I have lots of stories. I've been a white cane user for the past 40 years, and, uh, I have, uh, also worked for the Oregon Commission for the Blind, among other state agencies, teaching folks who are new to sight loss how to live their lives to the fullest with safety, efficiency, dignity, and fun. So I have taught folks how to ride the bus, um, how to cross streets, how to deal with intersections, and, um, I absolutely love what I do. I currently co-chair the ad hoc, uh, committee of the Pedestrian Safety Action Coalition, uh, which is an ad hoc committee made up of folks who are blind and are allies, as we work to promote safety for travelers, pedestrians, not only those using white canes and guide dogs, but everybody else. Because as, as we've heard today, it's so important to be safe. And, um, yes, I have, uh, been on the streets of Portland and other places in this state promoting the National White Cane Safety Day, which is, uh, since 1964, has been a, a national day of education of folks about the importance of pedestrian, uh, of, of laws that promote pedestrian safety. And, um, I love living in Portland. I've lived lots of other places, and I, but I've moved back. And, um, though I retired from the Commission for the Blind in 2010, I've been very involved in the community with folks that are new to sight loss, as I lead support groups for folks at the Hull Foundation and Learning Center out in Sandy. So I am, um, I love to travel. I love to be out doing what I do proudly using my white cane. And I don't know if you can see the shirt that I have on, but it in glitters says, "Stop. It's the law." So thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. If I can be of use to any of you anytime, anywhere, as, um, um, I've demonstrated over the last couple of years, please use me and use our committee, because it is absolutely so important that folks with white canes, as you saw in the, um, in the picture earlier today, that, you know, um, we need, um, we do our bit to get the training so that we can use white canes and/or guide dogs as well as human guides as we're traveling around. And now we, um, ask you to support this, uh, initiative so that, uh, proclamation, so that more and more people will learn that, you know, white cane safety is important, not just on October 15th, but every day. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. If I can answer any questions, go for it.
Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it. Thanks for your leadership. Commissioner Maps-
You're welcome.
-has his hand raised.
Um, are, if we're ready for statements-
I believe we are.
Well, great.
Go for it.
First, uh, let me start by thanking Lisa and Mary Lee for their testimony today. And I want to say this, um, to my colleagues on council.
Could I, could I ask you to speak louder? I'm also hard of hearing.
Absolutely. Thank you for that prompt. I think I probably, um, forgot to turn on my mic, and now I'm struggling with my computer. Am I better now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great.
You were great, you were great before. I just couldn't hear you.
Oh, wow. You are very kind. Um, let me say this. Colleagues, I'm delighted to join you in proclaiming October 15th, 2022 to be White Cane Awareness Day here. Excuse me, folks. Can we try to hold down the cross talk a little bit? Um, I'm delighted to join-
Do you?
Okay, it's just hard to talk over, folks.
Do you?
Colleagues, I'm delighted to join you in proclaiming October 15th, 2022 to be White Cane Awareness Day here in Portland. On this day, we celebrate the achievements of people who are blind or visually impaired. And on this day, we recommit ourselves to full integration, equality, education, and economic opportunities for Portlanders with visual impairments. White Cane Day has been celebrated in these United States since 1964, when President Lyndon Baines Johnson proclaimed October 15th of each year to be White Cane Safety Day. Now, it's no coincidence that White Cane Safety Day was created by LBJ in 1964. That is the same era. We saw legislation like the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights of 1965 signed into law. White Cane Safety Day, in other words, is part of the Civil Rights Revolution, which started about 60 years ago and continues to this day. In the 58 years since this nation celebrated our first White Cane Safety Day, Americans who are blind or have low vision have made substantial progress. They've become leaders in government and business, academics, and the arts, and they have made remarkable contributions here in Portland. At the same time, although people with low vision are freer and more prosperous than ever before, much work remains to be done. That is true even here in Portland. For example, last year, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention ranked Portland 29th on their list of best and worst cities for people with disabilities. Now, coming in 29th in this ranking is not good, and there is more bad news. In the past year, Portland has plummeted down the rankings. Today, Portland ranks 67th on the list of best cities for people with disabilities to live. And currently, the city of Portland is being sued by the disability community because it has become increasingly difficult for people with visual and mobility challenges to navigate our sidewalks. We must do better. That's why, on this day, the city and citizens of Portland commit ourselves to securing full and equal access to our public spaces, our educational institutions, and economic and employment opportunities for Portlanders with limited eyesight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Uh, Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Mayor Wheeler, and Commissioner Hardesty for bringing this proclamation forward. And I want to thank our guests, Mary Lee and Lisa, for their remarks today and for their advocacy on behalf of those, uh, with low vision and mobility issues every day. It's an important way to raise awareness, uh, for our visually impaired community members by being here and, and being in a public forum. And it's incumbent upon all of us in our roles to lift up awareness and do what we can to ensure accessibility and accommodations for all residents of all abilities now. Um, and it should be top of mind every day. So I just wanted to commend you for being here and for being strong advocates. Um, and, uh, thank you for your words.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, uh, thank you. And thank you for bringing this forward, Commissioner Hardesty and Lisa and Mary Lee Turner. Here, um, I want to try to do what Lisa did a little bit. So, um, I'm Commissioner Dan Ryan. I, um, I have glasses on, um, and I keep having my, uh, I, they keep getting stronger every two years because I was born before LBJ did this, uh, proclamation, if you will. And, um, I have, I don't have strawberry blonde hair anymore. I have gray hair. And, um, and I'm, uh, proud and humbled to be here today to just make a couple remarks. Um, I grew up with two cousins, Dawn and Mike Martins, who were legally blind. They could see shadows, and, and that was about it. And, um, it was really a benefit to be, uh, to play with them as a little kid and just know that they were just doing the best they could to hang out and be a kid. And their mom, my Auntie Karen, was amazing, and she gave them a lot of hope and inspiration and kind of told them they could do whatever they wanted. And so, uh, I'm always very, uh, that, that lived experience has always made me very sensitive to when I see people with white cane. And, um, I can't tell you how many times I realize, even though my glasses keep getting thicker, um, how helpful it is to me when I'm navigating as a pedestrian, and how many times I have to use my eyesight to lock eyes with the person that's on their cellphone, not looking at the street and about ready to plow into me. And so I, I get sad when I think about, uh, people that don't have that privilege. And, um, so I really am grateful that we have, we take a breath and have this proclamation every year. And, uh, and I do believe you, Mary Lee. It's, it's not just on October 15th, but it's year-round. So-
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here today.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you, colleagues. And with that, I've asked Commissioner Hardesty to read the proclamation on behalf of the city council. Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm also going to follow Lisa's, uh, model and say, "I am a chocolate brown African-American woman with long shoulder-length dreadlock hair, wearing a pink jacket with a blue dress, and my glasses change because I lose them constantly. And so don't remember what my glasses are." I am very happy to read this proclamation on behalf of my city council colleagues. Whereas blindness or low vision affects people of all ages, and those people have the right to travel safely while enjoying all the rights, benefits, and privileges of living, working, and playing in this great city of Portland. And whereas there are different degrees of blindness, visual diversity mean, meaning someone can be legally blind but still see colors, shapes, and a variety or degree of lights. Whereas white canes and guide dogs are tools that people who are blind or visually diverse use to identify themselves and to navigate their environment with greater independence. And whereas every citizen should be aware that Oregon law requires that drivers stop and remain stopped until a person carrying a white cane or using a guide dog has crossed the street. And whereas October 15th has been designated by the US Congress in 1964 as a day of education and celebration of the advent of white canes and guide dogs for independent and safe travel. Now, therefore, I not being Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses do hereby proclaim October 15th, 2022, to be White Cane Awareness Day in Portland, and call upon public officials, members of civic organizations, and all people in the city of Portland to join together as we work to ensure the benefits and privileges of life in our great city are available to persons who are blind or visually diverse.
Thank you for reading that. Thank you all. Appreciate that.
May I add one more thing?
Yes, of course.
And that is that if, if you look around Portland on October 15th, you won't see any, um, activity going on that promotes this day or celebrates it, um, because it so happens that the American Council of the Blind of Oregon is holding their state convention in Springfield on that weekend. And so there will be a celebration taking place on that day from 1:30, uh, until 3:00 in front of the Springfield Public Library. So, there.
Thanks, Mary Lee. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right.
You're welcome.
Next item, uh, the last item on the Time Certain Agenda, also a proclamation. Item 846, please.
Proclaim October 10th, 2022 to be Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you. I'll turn this over to Stone Hudson, our tribal relations associate, to introduce our guest speakers for this item. Welcome, Stone.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, and thank you to the commissioners and the entirety of council for providing us time and space to highlight this critical work. In addition to celebrating Native leadership of past, present, and future, the city's tribal relations program has always strived to increase indigenous visibility, both within policy and practice, but also within the physical spaces that make up our communities. In thoughtful collaboration with IndyHana, I want to introduce Samantha Hamlin of the Seneca-Cuyuga Tribe and Josue Rivas, Mexicana-Otomi, to speak on their efforts to promote indigenous visibility and how this work is integral to the land-back movement ahead of November and the celebration of Native American Heritage Month. Samantha and Josue, I turn it over to you.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, uh, council. Thank you for receiving us today. Uh, my name is Josue Rivas. I am Mexicana-Otomi, and I live in northeast Portland. And my colleague, Samantha Hamlin, also lives in southeast Portland. Um, I want to share my screen really quick. I'm a bishop person, so I have to show, have to show photos. Um, so for this year, as we, as we enter this, um, this paradigm shift of how indigenous peoples are seen in the community, um, our creative agency, IndyHana, came up with this project to be able to, um, create photo sessions that, uh, highlight the indigenous community in Portland, um, and also create something that we can showcase in a public art, uh, project. Uh, the intention is to not only create this imagery in, in collaboration with the community, but to also make sure that the community gets properly, um, compensated for their time and also for their contributions. We are thinking of putting together, um, photo sessions that will highlight the diversity and intersectionality of indigenous peoples in the city of Portland. And after that, through that process, we'll make sure that, um, we put these images up on public spaces around the city. We have one large, um, building in downtown in, uh, near Tenth and Morrison, uh, located that is, uh, already confirmed. But we're also going to be making images, um, that are going to be withpasted around town. And the three, um, messaging that we're trying to put out there for the community is, is these three things, is watching you, watching us. So just making sure that there is a connection between the community and the indigenous community as well. We are the land, uh, remembering that indigenous peoples are still here, and, uh, there is, uh, you know, a diverse group of indigenous, um, people that are native to this, to this land we call Portland. And also, we are the ones our ancestors prayed for, which refers to, um, the prayers and the, you know, hard battles that our ancestors sacrificed in order for us to be here today. In, in addition to that, we are going to be, uh, projecting these images from these photo sessions, um, onto buildings around, around, around town. And that way, we, we can connect the community again with, with an indigenous community and showcase the diversity and the beauty of indigenous peoples in the city. We want to make sure that this feels collaborative, educational, uh, vibrant, inclusive, and then also there is a level of representation. We have, uh, secure, uh, people that are going to be able to, to join us for these photo sessions, a diverse group of, of community members that live here in the city of Portland. And then on the right side, you will see the building that we're going to be using for the large mural. Um, and then on the middle, you're going to see, uh, as you walk around town, you're going to be able to see this life-size, um, full-body portraits of indigenous peoples that are going to have a messaging next to them, um, just so that we remember that even though, um, you know, this lands, you know, were, were, you know, conquered and, and to a certain degree, uh, stolen, uh, the indigenous peoples are still here today. Just a little bit of the timeline. Uh, we're trying to do this for Native American Heritage Month this year. Uh, we're a little short on our budget. We're still looking for funding, so, um, we are, you know, searching for, for the city and other people within the city to help us make our goal, to be able to pay people properly and also create these large, uh, large-scale murals. And overall, thank you so much for just listening to us and having the opportunity to be part of this community. That's all that matters.
Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to just weigh in with one more sentiment. We have been so lucky to be partnering with, uh, many different factors of the city and the county. We've been working with the Future Generations Collaborative, the Metro Portland, um, the Multnomah County, obviously, Laura John and her amazing team, Miranda and Stone, um, and as well as RAC and the City Arts Fund. And it's been truly amazing to watch the city and all of its many different facets come together to collaborate and to understand that amplifying voices doesn't always need to be a marching in the street. It doesn't always need to be, you know, just, uh, a poster. It's a conversation that leads to building a bridge between representation and, uh, change. So I think this would be an amazing project to lead that dialogue and to allow the city to take charge in that. And I think that's, you know, at IndyHana, what we want to be able to provide is that bridge. You know, let's not put the weight on the people that come to the city. Let's allow the city a way to, to start that dialogue peacefully and beautifully. And this can be a truly beautiful, gentle reminder that indigenous people aren't just here, they're at, they're a part of the community, they're a part of the city. We are all working every day to make this place more beautiful and to make this place more collaborative. So, so this art project is not just something for the month of November. It's a, it's a mission to further a dialogue that would head into the many years to come and to improve our society based- the many years to come and to improve our society based on indigenous knowledge and partnership.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And Stone, does that complete the presentation?
Yes, it does, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. I want to thank you, Stone, and I want to thank our guests Samantha and Josue for joining us here today. As I've said in years past, Indigenous Peoples' Day is an opportunity to spend time learning more about tribal people and those who identify as indigenous globally. Activating the city's core value of anti-racism, Indigenous Peoples' Day signifies a shift in how the narrative of the Americas is understood. Indigenous Peoples' Day gives recognition to the first peoples of this land, and it uplifts the resiliency and the rich cultural traditions of indigenous peoples. Oftentimes, we tend to focus on the dark histories and the suffering of the native people. In our commitment to being an ally to Indian country, we have a duty to recognize and address past harms while at the same time elevating the vibrant native communities that thrive in Portland to this day. Indigenous Peoples' Day is as much a moment for reflection and learning as it is a triumphant celebration and an opportunity for indigenous people to proudly proclaim that they are still here. Furthermore, it's an opportunity for all of us to celebrate the diversity, prosperity, and strength that native communities bring and show us that we, show everybody that we see you and that we value you. The city will continue to meaningfully engage with native peoples to ensure our work is strategic and that it's rooted in positive outcomes for indigenous peoples. Next month, the city will provide our fourth annual tribal relations employee training to continue to build foundational knowledge of tribal governments, sovereignty, treaty rights, and serving the needs of indigenous Portlanders. As we wait with anticipation for that training, I also ask that all of us hold space to recognize, honor, and celebrate indigenous peoples. I'd like to open this up for my colleagues now to comment before I read the proclamation. First, in line is Commissioner Maps, then Commissioner Rubio, then Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, I am delighted to join you in declaring October 10th, 2022 to be Indigenous Peoples' Day here in Portland. The purpose of this holiday is to celebrate native cultures and Native American history. It is particularly appropriate for Portland to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. Humans have been living in this space that we know as Portland for about 11,000 years. Some of those first people were known by names that are still familiar to us. There were the Clackamas, the Multnomah, and the Toowalatin peoples. In fact, until the mid-1800s, most of the people who lived in the Oregon Territories were Native Americans. Now, that changed with the Oregon Donation Act of 1850, which seized 2.5 million acres of tribal lands, including all of what is now Portland, and offered that land to white settlers for free. Now, Native Americans are not just part of Portland's past. Native Americans are very much part of who we are today. Today, more than 70,000 indigenous people live in the greater Portland area, which makes us the ninth-largest urban Indian population in the United States. Still, even today, indigenous Portlanders face enormous challenges and discrimination. For example, today, poverty rates amongst Native Americans in the Portland metro area are twice as high as poverty rates for their white neighbors. Native American unemployment rates are 70% higher than unemployment rates for white Portlanders. In Portland, more than half of native students do not graduate from high school. And indigenous Portlanders are the victims of violent crimes at rates 250% higher than their white neighbors. Now, despite these challenges, Native Americans have made enormous contributions to Portland's economy and culture. For those of you who want to learn more about Native Americans here in Oregon, I encourage you to visit the Oregon Historical Society and the Portland Art Museum, both of which have excellent exhibits on Native American art, history, and culture. And I encourage all Portlanders to join me in observing this year's Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the Office of Tribal Relations for bringing this forward today. I'm here in deep appreciation of today's significance and want to recognize the moment today. Indigenous communities are diverse, they're multilingual, and have made significant contributions, yet continue to experience the lasting effects of colonization. And this history of oppressive policies directly correlates to the rise in violence, disproportionate health outcomes, and incarceration rates within indigenous communities in Oregon, also across the United States and in the Americas. And as a city, we have so much more to do to help lift up our work and the contributions of these communities from the legacy of broken promises to protect their right to vote and the right to representation, and to support self-determination and the right of other opportunities that their ancestors have long been denied. It's imperative that we honor the resilience and the contributions that indigenous and Native Americans have made at all levels of government and in our communities. And again, just want to lift up how important the work of tribal relations is to the city of Portland and the work that they do every day to raise awareness about these communities. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Colleagues, it's just an honor to be part of this proclamation and support the incredible traditions, the history, the culture of native and indigenous communities. This proclamation offers a moment to celebrate the enormous role the Native American community has played, especially in our community. And I'll just say a couple more things. I really appreciate the comments by my colleagues, so I won't repeat. I'm editing as I think about this. Earlier this week, I had the opportunity to chat with Loretta Guzman, the owner of Bison Coffee House in Kohli. And it was just so important that I was able to listen to her share her story about what she's experienced as a business owner in Portland and being so resilient during the pandemic. And what I really took away was her sincerity about being a bridge builder and what a leader we need in her in this community at this time. And also, I was really heartened by the damage that was done to the art in the Bison Coffee House. And the native and indigenous people all created this art. So it's quite an art gallery. I had no idea. Anyway, so I wanted to dedicate my comments and thoughts to her and her small business. I also want to just end with, I had the joy of growing up, spending a lot of times, summers on the Oregon coast, and it was on the land that is the Sluts Tribe. And two big families, Ryans and the Masons, we just played all the time together, and we just called each other cousins. They were from the Sluts Tribe. And so I was, at a young age, able to hear a lot about their experience and what it was like to know that that's their land. And I wanted then, moving forward to that end, I became the proud uncle to my niece, Tysey Mason. Yes, one of my older brothers and one of the Mason girls got together. That happens when one family has eight children, one has 12. And it's been wonderful to have her and her sons, Devonte, Tyrell, and Mackay, to be part of the family. I'm a very proud uncle of my family in the Sluts Tribe. And I just am grateful that we always take time. And I'm really excited about the art that was in the presentation that was shared and revealed. So I'm looking forward to checking that out. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Rubio and Mayor, for bringing this proclamation forward. I will say that I want to start by really appreciating Laura John for her incredible leadership of our tribal relations office. I want to appreciate Stone Hudson, who hit the ground running, I think about a year and a half ago now. It feels like Stone's always been here. And the absolutely commitment that the office has shown to helping all of us understand the culture of our tribes in a much more intentional way. I will say that Commissioner Amanda Fritz really made a commitment as part of the city council to really center Native American voices in ways that did not happen before she was on this council. Since I've been here, I have seen us actually really do things very intentional that really highlight making sure that we are respecting the independence and the culture of native nations all across this region. We have a long way to go before we could, with a straight face, say that we actually have built this relationship in a way that it is going to take us into the future. But what I know is that we have a commitment that is actually different than any I've seen in quite some time, to really join hands and really appreciate all that the native community provides to us around culture, around food, around planning seven generations ahead. I keep stealing this from your culture because I love it so. When people think about making decisions today for the seventh generation ahead, that tells me that you are really intentional about making sure that every move we take today is going to really build that future that we all say we want. And so I am grateful, all of you, all of our guest speakers today. I'm grateful for the ongoing work that happens behind the scene with the tribal relations office. And I'm thrilled to be part of this council today as we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, and thank you to all my colleagues. I'll now read the 2022 Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. And I want to thank our community members as well as our tribal relations office for their work to draft this proclamation on behalf of all of us. Whereas, the city of Portland recognizes that the indigenous people of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial. And whereas, the city of Portland exists at the confluence of the Willamette and Columbia Rivers, which hold a rich and beautiful history of being home to villages and trade routes, to the indigenous people that have been in relation with the land long before the westward expansion of European-American settlements in this country. And whereas, indigenous people continue to advocate passionately for their community, way of life, and the well-being of the land that they've been stewards of since time immemorial. And whereas, the city of Portland will integrate indigenous knowledge and perspective into both practices and policy to combat the institutional racism impacting indigenous people who continue to face hardships as a result of centuries of neglectful policies and actions responsible for the present-day disproportionate outcomes in health, education, and economic mobility. And whereas, the city of Portland Tribal Relations Program supports and facilitates meaningful consultation with regional tribes in order to uncover and preserve the culture and histories rooted in native land. And whereas, on October 7th, 2015, Portland City Council passed a resolution resolving that the city of Portland shall recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October. And whereas, the city recognizes the intergenerational harm that has been caused by the federal Indian boarding school policies, which separated children from their families, that led to the loss of culture, language, and connection to indigenous ways of life, calling for the recognition of September 30th as the National Day of Remembrance for Indian Boarding Schools. And whereas, the 2022 Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be used to express a commitment to amplifying the voice and the visibility of indigenous people through city policies, practices, advocacy, and investments that ensure greater access to historically sacred lands and opportunity for communal collaboration on city initiatives while honoring our nation's indigenous history and contributions. Now, therefore, I Ted Wheeler, mayor of the city of Portland, Oregon, the city of roses, do hereby proclaim October 10th, 2022, to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in Portland and encourage all residents to observe this day. Thank you all. Appreciate it. And I want to once again thank our closed captioners for bearing with us for two solid hours. Why don't we take a 10-minute recess and let their hands cool down a bit? And we will reconvene at 11:40 a.m. We are in recess. We'll now go to the regular agenda. We'll start with number 853.
All right, 853. "Amend Arts Education and Access Income Tax Code Related to Arts Education Coordination."
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been my pleasure to serve as the council's liaison to arts and culture and its portfolio, which includes the Regional Arts and Culture Council, also known as RAC, and the Arts Education and Access Fund Oversight Committee. Arts are a key driver and core part of Portland's identity in terms of our culture, our economy, and integral to the education of our K through five students. And Portland's Arts and Education Access Fund, commonly referred to as the Arts Tax, was established by voters in 2012 to restore the arts education in Portland's six public school districts and to expand access to arts and culture for Portland residents. Students in our six school districts, Centennial, David Douglas, Park Rose, Portland, Reynolds, and Riverdale, benefit from this tax. Last fiscal year, the school districts received $6.8 million for arts educators and RAC received almost $3.4 million for grants to nonprofit and arts organizations. At its inception, RAC was allowed up to three of the net tax revenues for arts education coordination costs, ensuring that highly qualified persons will coordinate and work with the school districts. And now, with 10 years behind us since the original passage of the tax measure and where the work within our schools has changed over the years, and especially with the pandemic, we are proposing a small but impactful change that will enable increased accountability and support for both the oversight and education coordination functions for the next set of years. Given the public's high expectations of these public funds, the City needs to be working with our schools directly to achieve the following: defining clear and consistent data tracking, establishing reporting deadlines for Portland school districts and ensuring that they meet those deadlines, and providing an increased level of professional arts education coordination and collaboration between the school districts and among arts teachers. In addition, the ordinance will enable the City to better support the Arts Oversight Committee in carrying out these duties. To date, the City for the past 10 years provided minimum staff time from OMF for note-taking duties. As a program that oversees millions of taxpayer dollars, I believe this was a misstep and one this ordinance is addressing. This ordinance reassines the management of the Arts Education Coordination responsibilities to the City with a new position housed in the City Arts Program. Additionally, the Arts Oversight Committee will also share their report later this fall, which we believe can help inform this transition as it moves forward. I also want to recognize that some very committed and invested people may not support these changes, and I want to thank them for their comments and feedback. I remain clear, however, in my belief that these changes are necessary to come into better alignment with our city goals for accountability and public service. Finally, I want to make sure that this council and the public and all invested stakeholders, including RAC and the AOC, understand that this ordinance is squarely focused on the arts education coordination piece. We are not changing anything related to the millions of dollars RAC receives from the arts tax to pass to schools or award to nonprofits. This is a very targeted effort. More importantly, nor does it change the millions and other public funds the City contracts with RAC for operating costs and to support local artists. So now to provide more detailed information, I will turn it over to Jeff Hawthorne and Stephen Herrera.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Mayor Wheeler.
Commissioners, my name is Jeff Hawthorne, and I'm the City Arts Program Manager in the Office of Management and Finance. The ordinance before you today would change city code related to the Arts Education and Access Income Tax, Section 5.73. Moving arts education coordination responsibilities to the City Arts Program at OMF would set us up to provide a higher level of collaboration between the school districts and a higher level of service to arts teachers. To recap the background, as you know, 62% of Portland voters approved the Arts Education and Access Fund back in 2012, commonly referred to as the Arts Tax. The purpose of this tax is to ensure arts education in Portland's six public school districts, which the Commissioner mentioned, and to expand access to arts and culture for all Portland residents. Specifically, the City has IGAs with Portland's six school districts to pay for one K through five arts teacher for every 500 students. These teachers are certified to teach dance, music, theater, and/or visual art, and school districts received a total of about $6.8 million last year. In addition, RAC receives disbursements to award grants to nonprofit organizations and to fund accessible arts events throughout Portland. RAC received $3.4 million last year. A lesser-known provision of the arts tax allows RAC to use some of its allocation and up to 3% of the net revenues each year for arts education coordination costs. This ensures that highly qualified persons will coordinate and work with school districts in the provision of high-quality arts and/or music programs. Now, this arrangement made sense when the arts tax was first established in 2012 because at that time, RAC had a robust $1 million arts education program, a tri-county public-private partnership known as the Right Brain Initiative. Right Brain provided professional development and other direct services to school districts, so there was an efficiency in having RAC perform this additional arts education coordination service for the City's arts tax. RAC ended those programs in 2020 and today spends $125,000 of arts tax money to coordinate these services. In conversations in 2021 and 2022, and through an informal survey sent to school district representatives who attended our annual meeting with superintendents in May, we learned that school districts, while appreciative of the support, are looking for increased levels of arts technical expertise and professional support. At the end of the day, it is our recommendation that it should be the City's responsibility to ensure that we are fulfilling the promise of the arts tax by supporting and measuring arts education services in our schools. In addition, as the Commissioner said, the Arts Oversight Committee currently operates with minimal staff support, and we believe the City should support them commensurate with a high level of responsibility overseeing the disbursement of millions of taxpayer dollars every year. We appreciate how diligent and committed the committee has been in fulfilling the mission of their work, and we are committed to better supporting them and collaborating with them during and beyond this transition. Lastly, please note that this amendment deletes the word "citizen" from the originally-named Citizen Oversight Committee, to refer to it just as the Oversight Committee in the interest of inclusivity. We are requesting City Council's support of this ordinance, which would go into effect on November 18, and I will now turn it over to Stephen Herrera from Commissioner Rubio's office to share our plans for the future.
Thank you, Jeff, and good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Stephen Herrera, Senior Policy Advisor for Commissioner Rubio, which includes liaising to the Regional Arts and Culture Council and the City Arts Portfolio. As a part of my duties, I convene a monthly meeting of arts liaisons from each council office, and we have been keeping your offices informed of this work over the past several months. If approved, next steps would involve the Arts Liaison's Work Group, education and arts stakeholders, the Arts Oversight Committee, and RAC to co-create a job description and develop an inclusive hiring process for an updated arts education position ideally suited for partnerships with schools. So please stay tuned. In closing, Jeff and I are available to answer any questions, and Tyler Wallace from the Revenue Division is here to answer any technical or financial tax questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge this is the first time that Stephen has presented in front of this body, and I just wanted to really recognize and appreciate him as being one of the strong staff supporters here, supporting Commissioner Rubio. So thank you, Stephen, for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Is there any public testimony on this item? Kealan?
Yes, we have six people signed up for this item.
Very good. If there's no questions, why don't we get to public testimony? Maybe we'll bring you back up.
Mayor, if I may, just before we get to public testimony, I just want to make sure there is some confusion about my role in this agenda item, and I want to be really clear before we get to public testimony. I did not have the time to talk to RAC that I would have liked to prior to us being here today. I just want to make sure that the public understands that I am committed to working with Commissioner Rubio, and I believe that where we're moving today is absolutely the right direction for us to go. So just wanted to clarify that before we got into public testimony, because I've been hearing rumors of what I said and what I didn't say, and I just like clearing up rumors where I can. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. It'll be three minutes each, please, name for the record, and Kealan will call your name and order.
First up, we have Laura Strebe.
Welcome, Laura. Thanks for being here.
All right. Good morning. My name is Laura Strebe. I am the founder and executive director of an underserved, youth-focused, arts educational nonprofit called Vibe of Portland, with over 20 years of arts and nonprofit leadership experience. I have been involved with the Arts Education and Access Fund since before it was an initiative on the ballot in fall of 2012. I joined the Oversight Committee in 2017, and I have been the chair since January 2019. I come before you this morning as our Oversight Committee is finalizing our report to share our findings and recommendations with you later this year. Our full Oversight Committee stands with me in asking that you vote no on this agenda item 853, making these changes to city code at this time. We are asking for this no vote because our Oversight Committee, a committee expressly charged with the mandate for oversight on the Arts Education and Access Fund, and that we have been left out of this process and discussion or even knowledge of these code changes until they were told by Commissioner Rubio's office to us in mid-August that they were bringing these changes to council in September. This was done with zero oversight, discussion, or recommendations from our committee. We had no seat or voice at this table. We are still unclear as to the specific reasoning for this quick and rushed change to city code. The working agreement with the City states that our Oversight Committee share our annual report with City Council in November or December to share our findings and make recommendations to council. The members of our volunteer committee are working diligently to finalize our annual report and bring our recommendations to you within the next month. Having this immense change to city code dropped on us at our mid-August public committee meeting has left us with several questions that need answering before we can make any recommendation on this major change. In a brief meeting with Commissioner Rubio... In a brief meeting with Commissioner Rubio yesterday, some but not all stakeholders were present. We had a goal of putting a pause on this agenda item for the purpose of having a deeper, more robust conversation backed up with data and sound timelines regarding this change. A 40-minute meeting was barely enough time to scratch the surface on the complexities of this fund and the issues at play. While there was some progress made, it was clear that much more time is needed for these constructive conversations, for more information and data to be shared transparently with all stakeholders, and shared agreements of respect and dialogue for everyone to adhere to. Our committee questions revolve around questions of what specifically has been asked by outside stakeholders of RAC, and what timeline was given to receive and implement that feedback? What systems are not working as they are supposed to, and what adjustments could be made to ensure compliance with city code? This evaluation and question-asking needs to come directly from our Oversight Committee as it is clearly stated in a 2018 memo from the City Attorney, often known as the Taylor Memo, which legally defines roles and responsibilities for all stakeholders of the AEAF. For the Oversight Committee, the City Attorney states on page 5 of his memo that, quote, "In addition to reviewing expenditures and monitoring the student ratio, there is a broad mandate for the Citizen Oversight Committee, the Umbrella Oversight Committee, charged with ensuring that this fund is implemented as required by RAC, city, school districts, and governing agreements. For example, the Citizen Oversight Committee could evaluate and report on how well RAC is performing its quality oversight function," end quote. The proposed city changes have directly bypassed the function and intent of our Oversight Committee. Our committee cannot support these changes until there is time for due process for all channels to get more information and data regarding these code changes that have been worked through from our full Oversight Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next individual, please.
Next up, we have Elizabeth Stock.
Thanks. And again, I encourage people, please, to try and stay within the three minutes. Good afternoon. Morning, Still. Sorry. Good morning.
Good morning, Still. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Elizabeth Stock. I am the interim board chair at RAC. I am also a city-appointed Multnomah County Board Member at RAC. I am a nonprofit executive and consultant, and most importantly, I'm a mom to two young boys, the older of whom just started at Woodlawn Elementary in my neighborhood. So I come to you today with all of those intersecting identities in mind. My request today is that you vote no on this proposed ordinance and funding shift. I believe it's imperative that RAC have the opportunity alongside the city of Portland, Commissioner Rubio, and the AOC to make a decision together, to collaborate on the why of this potential change. I do not believe that I, as a board member, have been invited into this conversation adequately. I'm very heartened that we had a productive meeting yesterday morning at Commissioner Rubio's office. We began building what I think can be a very meaningful relationship and contribute to productive dialogue. But the fact is, on Friday afternoon of last week, we received a memo with the rationale for this change, not allowing us enough time to process the information, let alone respond to it. That's three business days. Many of us are volunteering our time in order to support this effort and really have a strong request to simply pause on this change so that we can allow time for conversation and dialogue. I believe that there's huge opportunity for us to steward these funds in the way that they were meant to be stewarded, but we can't do that without time at the table and voices being heard. So I want to also just take a moment to respond to the informal survey that was mentioned during Mr. Hawthorne's remarks. I believe, I appreciate the voices that were shared in that survey, but I would recommend asking how many people participated in that, because the number is small. Whereas Laura Strebe, who just spoke, talked about a robust report including the voices of many key stakeholders, parents, educators, and school officials. I believe it would make a lot of sense to allow us to review that before making a decision that has an impact on where funding is allocated. Okay. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. And just by way of clarification, obviously, I'll defer to the commissioner in charge, but it is not our intention to vote today. This is just a first reading.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
We appreciate your being here. Next individual, please.
Next up, we have Matthew Scharf.
Hi, Matthew.
It doesn't look like Matthew's joined us. Next, we have Jonathan Garcia.
Jonathan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jonathan Garcia, and I'm the Chief of Staff for Portland Public Schools. You should have received written testimony from our superintendent, Guadalupe Guerrero, who started his classroom career as a music educator. Superintendent Guerrero was also named the Oregon Music Education Association 2021 Outstanding Administrator of the Year, an honor he received for his commitment to expanding equitable access to arts education in Portland. On behalf of our district of 8,000 staff and 47,000 students, I urge you to support this ordinance. Like our community, we want to make sure these dollars are spent productively and prudently. We appreciate our partnership with the Regional Arts and Culture Council, RAC, and their work to support artists. To get the most from the Arts Education and Access Fund direct investments, though, we need dedicated support in line with state learning standards. This shift would free RAC to concentrate on convening artists, which our region needs, while also ensuring school districts like ours have the capacity to provide the professional learning opportunities and dedicated support our educators need.
Thank you. You may have cut off, but we got the point. We appreciate it. Next individual, please.
Able to provide comment today. She, of course, would be happy to meet with any member of the commission or your staff. Dedicated support through the city will also maximize access to and increase equity within arts programming. On this point, we see values alignment with the city's arts work. The city has extended resiliency support to cultural organization and black artists, initiated a community-rooted cultural planning process, and advanced projects like the Interstate Firehouse Cultural Center. These investments support our students and our communities in celebrating their cultures, their identities, and lived experiences, as well as building their capacity to use art to disrupt unjust systems. Our community voted for this fund because they wanted us to have the strongest arts education programming in the country. Portland Public Schools wants this, too. We achieve that excellence by ensuring we can maximize direct services to children and youth, and this ordinance does that. We urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate it. You cut out a little bit, but I think we heard almost all of it, I think. So thank you for your testimony. Next individual, please.
Next up, we have Carol Tatch.
Welcome, Carol. Thanks for being here.
Good morning to you all. Thank you. As a person who has a white cane with a visual disability, love seeing that proclamation come through.
Thank you.
And then, let's see if I can sit down here. And then, of course, hearing about the work from Ho Shway for Indehina. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Commissioners and guests. I am Carol Tatch, the Co-Executive Director of the Regional Arts and Culture Council. We last conversed in May when I presented RAC's FY 2021 Advancing Arts and Culture Report. RAC does not support, nor do we recommend, the advancement of Item Number 853. Although we have worked via many lines of communication to understand the purpose of the change request, we have not been given the grace of a consistent response. The past two years have been phenomenal for RAC's arts education program and the management of our contracted services for the Arts Education Income Tax Fund and for our engagement with the Arts Oversight Committee, both parties admitting that it is the only time that this program has been successfully managed. How do we measure success? By surveys, responses, and engagement from the AOC, arts educators, art school liaisons, and our own work. We have data to support the success, and you have that data as well, because we report on it regularly. We've recently been criticized as providing too much information in our reports to the city, yet we stand here without any useful information requested since we were notified of the list of six bulleted items in mid-July, and that this would come to council in early September, basically within a month. We made multiple requests that have yielded a multiplicity of untruths with no useful data being offered. We have asked for information from anecdotally disgruntled educators, and none of which have been supplied. Until finally in August, Del and I were told at a meeting with Commissioner Rubio that there was nothing to back up their claims, no emails, no letters, no phone call scripts. Surprisingly, yesterday, a new reason was brought forward before a small group of people committed to ensuring this process remains open and inclusive. If that reason were true, I would not be here today, as the reason given would have halted this process. The memo that accompanies the ordinance change request has misinformation that could have been easily confirmed had we or the AOC been consulted, as it was being drawn up. We were not allowed that grace. The changes to the ordinance are as troubling as this process has been. We do not believe that Jeff Hawthorne's office can effectively execute the needs of the AEF ordinance duties, and Commissioner Rubio has not taken the time to learn from us about our work around the AEF, nor that of the AOC. There will be no checks and balances. Who then will lead this process as an objective and equitable endeavor? There are clear areas of conflict in this process. The AOC has been requesting an opportunity to better understand the motivations of Commissioner Rubio and have been held at arm's length or further. As they are a committee charged with the ordinance, compliance, and oversight, it makes sense to include them, yet they too have not had a seat at the table nor have been offered the information they are still requesting. James Dixon came before you three weeks ago requesting an equity review for the process, and we heard in this room from Commissioner Rubio that he and the AOC would be engaged. That has not happened. Indeed, Commissioner Rubio herself has not directly spoken with him or the AOC at all. For RAC and the AOC, it is about equity, inclusion, and access. We are contracted to do this work, and we do it by not taking the full allocation of 3%. We are not paid for our duties for the AEF. What we do not use for the program is sent back out to the community in grants. That was clarified with your commission's art alliance liaisons last year, earlier this year. We could take $300,000, but we don't. That is our commitment to ensuring these public funds are redistributed and that will not be the case if this ordinance passes here today, or furthers. I will stop there.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your testimony. Thanks for being here. Kielin, next.
Next up, we have Nancy Helmsworth.
Hi, Nancy. Thank you for being here.
Hi. Greetings, Mayor and Commissioners. Let's see if I can get adjusted properly here. Thank you for this opportunity today, and thank you in advance for your time. I have testified before the City Council multiple times about the AEF in the past. I am a former arts tax-funded PPS visual arts teacher and an art teacher with 24 years' experience in public schools and another 15 years' experience teaching all ages in non-traditional educational settings. I also was a member of the Arts Oversight Committee working under the leadership of Stan Penkin and Craig Gibbons. That gives you a little timeline of when I was working. And I'm quite familiar with the workings of the AEF and volunteered many, many hours to support its implementation. I am now on the Board of RAC, and I'm a very recent recruit. I just started in August. I am urging you to vote no on Item A53, the ordinance change that moves the arts education responsibilities from RAC to the portfolio of Commissioner Rubio and within the city of Portland. And the city, I keep saying it wrong, the cap, Mr. Hawthorne. Yesterday, multiple RAC board members met with Commissioner Rubio and staff to better understand their desire to make this shift. We felt like the creation of 853 happened quickly, and we needed adequate time to fully understand the rationale behind the changes. Our much appreciated, much appreciated, but short meeting yesterday, and we do understand people are very busy, was a helpful first step to understanding, but yet there was not enough time to thoroughly share either or both sides of the issue. We propose to pause any decision on moving forward with this funding shift and use the time to better understand both sides of the issue, pros and cons. We want to understand the data behind this proposed shift from both sides, from Commissioner Rubio's office and from the AOC. We want the opportunity to ask questions, to synthesize our understanding. And we want to review the comprehensive, oops, and I've said that before, the robust data the AOC has gathered, but not yet shared. And actually, I believe that the arts education person within RAC has gathered data, too, that has yet to come to light. So there's just tons of information out there. When we met yesterday, we also pitched, this is what I feel really good about, pitched the idea that the pause could be used as a time to forge well-functioning relationships between RAC and the City Arts Program Manager and Commissioner Rubio's office. We do have solidly shared goals, and building easy routes of communication, shared trust, and collaborative habits would only better serve the citizens of Portland and the functioning of both our institutions. And lastly, pausing and taking time to build this conduit between our groups will give us all time to share expertise as we write mutually-agreed-upon measures of success. We all want success, but what does that look like, and how is that measured? And as an art teacher, that's what we do all the time. What does it look like? How do we recognize it? We wholeheartedly believe these are worthy goals that suit the needs and functioning of all parties involved. So we're going to ask again today, please vote no on Item 853, or I guess the option, too, is vote pause. I mean, I don't quite know how you do everything. So I think we could put our brains together, put our brains together before anything is set in stone. But thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. Next individual.
Next up, we have Bridge Green Charles Simka Johnson.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Is it afternoon yet? Good afternoon, and again, Salaam alaikum wa rakmatullah. Earlier, I did not get a chance to, of course, mention woman, life, freedom. We're having some problems here locally, but Iran is really fighting misogyny right now. So, but this testimony is restricted to a particular item, and one thing that was interesting is we heard about the ending or the lapse of the Right Brain Initiative. And as we try and figure out how this money is going to be supervised, I want to be very clear that it's disappointing about what money is missing. There was no mention of the Boyle family, of the Paul Allen Family Foundation, of Mr. Phil Knight, who can give $2 million to Betty Johnson and $1 million to the Republicans. We need better funding for the arts in addition to these little political adjustments as to how the AOC and the AEF, which Commissioner Hardesty has before backed me up on the trouble of acronyms, the Arts Education and Access Fund, which Nancy did expand the acronym. I wouldn't personally feel competent to make a strong recommendation about yes, no, or pause here. However, you have to balance whether you consider yourselves more executive or more of a deliberative legislative body, and if there's any need for urgency here. I think when we come up to Number 850, which was pulled, that's an emergency item. I haven't heard the word "emergency" here, as we used to sometimes hear it. But given the fact that a robust conversation of this topic would be an opportunity to bring in perhaps matching grant funding from the Schnitzers, the Boils. I never really see, I know Joe Weston with American Property Management is good for Catholic charities, but I don't know if he's done anything for the arts. If this moves slowly, there's an opportunity to build a structure where RAC or the Arts Commission Office can talk about additional funding that's been matched to some of these programs. So I hope that regardless of whether we get cool sound effects or not, we will be able to have not just the spending that we're talking about now, but additional sources of income mentioned whenever we come to a final structure between how the RAC or Mr. Hawthorne's program will be administering this program. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Maps was just about the mic.
That completes testimony.
All right. Very good. Colleagues, any further questions or comments before I move this one along? All right. This is the first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you, everybody, for your testimony. Next item is a second reading, 854.
Amend trees code to improve clarity, efficiency, and outcomes of tree regulations.
Colleagues, this is the second reading. We've already heard a presentation and had opportunity for public testimony. Is there any further discussion on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to appreciate Commissioner Rubio and the staff from the Forestry Division, because, as you may remember from last week, I had two primary concerns. One, we're setting an expectation that we were going to pay advisory committee members merely by removing language that says it is a volunteer commitment. prevent us from doing it without the City Council having a real plan about how we're going to support community volunteers who volunteer their time for boards and commissions. If it's just a housekeeping item with no action, I would actually be very happy to strike that change from this resolution today, if there's a second on this council for that. The second issue that I brought up that I'm very concerned about is going from getting a, going from getting advice to a mandate that the Forestry Department actually has to sign off, as compared to advice, is a very slippery slope. And I am very concerned that my experience with forestry is they've not been very accessible and actually committed to actually mitigating the problems that we've had. I'll use the Portland Art Museum as a great example. If not for the leadership of Commissioner Rubio, we'd be still pondering whether we could remove a tree, so that that multimillion-dollar operation could be redeveloped. And so I think that there are some problems, that those two particular items give me great concern and great pause on. And so I would like to just say, Commissioner in charge, I'm, you know, that's my concern.
Commissioner Rubio.
I totally understand. I'm not prepared, staff-wise, to make any changes on the floor, but I hear you and will definitely take note regardless of where you land today.
Thank you, Mayor. Sounds like we're ready to move on.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
I want to thank Parks and Urban Forestry for this work and bringing this forward. I especially want to thank Nick Desai and Brian for their work on this and the briefing ahead of today's session. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you for last week's presentation, and thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for bringing this forward. I think that the conversations we had were really important. I think the comments that were just made by Commissioner Hardesty had a lot of validity. And, but at this moment, at this time, I'll go ahead and move this forward. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
For the reasons I mentioned, I vote no.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, 855, please, and this is an emergency ordinance.
Authorize the Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of the Brentwood-Darlington Bike Ped Improvements Project through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority.
Commissioner Hardesty.
I have never thought in my time here I'd be bringing an ordinance forward that actually would create a bike and pedestrian route in Brentwood-Darlington. But here we are today. Thank you, Mayor. We have before us an ordinance that will move forward this important bike and pedestrian route in the Brentwood-Darlington neighborhood. It's also exciting to point out that this will be a multimodal connection to and across 82nd Avenue, and will help provide safer connections to this vital quarter that will itself have numerous safety improvements coming to it over the next few years. PBOT Right-of-Way staff is here to answer any questions you may have. I see Ashley McLei is here. Ashley, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Name for the record is Ashley McLei. I'm a PBOT Right-of-Way agent. I'm joined this morning by Lisa Patterson.
Yeah, Ashley, can you speak into the microphone? We're struggling to hear you a little bit.
Is that better?
Yeah, it's a little better. Thank you.
We're here to discuss Brentwood-Darlington transportation improvements. Ordinance is for the acquisition of the right of way we need in order to complete the project. It would give us the authority to compensate property owners, and if necessary, condemn the property rights.
Hi, everyone. My name's Lisa Patterson. I'm the capital project manager with PBOT, and I will just go over a little bit, a few details about the project beyond what Commissioner Hardesty provided. So we will be infilling and providing missing sidewalks along southeast Fauveille and southeast Duke, between 52nd and 82nd. And then, as well as intersection improvements at southeast 52nd and southeast Knapp, and southeast 72nd and Ogden Street, where we'll be upgrading the corner ramps, improving the crossings with new striping, and lighting for those intersections. In addition, we will be adding a new signal at 82nd and Knapp. This is a jogged intersection, so the signal is at Knapp Street, but it does provide connection from Ogden west of 82nd to Knapp Street east of 82nd. And along with the sidewalk improvements, we also will be updating over 60 ADA ramp locations. So for the public involvement on this project, this started many years ago during the 2018, when a great application was submitted for federal funding. The grant actually was not originally approved for funding, but there was an outpouring of community support that reversed the decision. We had multiple letters signed for that application with community support, and we are continually working with the community, giving them regular project updates during the design phase, and we will, we plan to continue during construction.
Ashley, did you have more? Or did you cut off for some reason? Ashley, are you done with your presentation? We're not clear on that.
I'll speak about the right of way, and then I'll be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 855 gives the authority to compensate property owners for the easement rights we need for this project. Determining or rights, rights, the AOC property owners for this project. Determining rights we need for the construction of the ADA ramps, as well as the sidewalk facilities that are missing. I've invited all of the property owners to this reading via letter.
Ashley, I'm sorry. It's very, very hard to hear you when we have somebody outside screaming, so it makes it even harder. Is there some way you could move your microphone closer?
I'm using my laptop, so.
Ah, okay. Just speak up, and I'm sure we'll hear you fine.
I think she's on.
That concludes our presentation. The property owners have been invited. I'm not sure if anybody signed up to testify.
Thank you, Ashley. Really appreciate your testimony. Yeah, we worked through some very challenging conditions here today, but I think we all got the gist of your presentation, and the visuals always are helpful. So thank you so much. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Very good. Thank you, Ashley. We heard most of it, and I know it's really, it's hard with the laptops, and we appreciate your being here and leading on this. How many people do we have signed up?
We had one person sign up, but it doesn't look like they've joined yet, so.
All right. Very good. Did you want to testify on this?
This is 855, not 850.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion on this item? It's an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye. Thank you, Ashley, for good work.
Wheeler.
Commissioner Hardesty, thank you for bringing this forward. And Ashley, thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. And that will go back to the consent agenda, where item number 850 was pulled. Please read item 850.
Accept grant in the amount of $789,000 from the state of Oregon. Authorize intergovernmental agreement for Southwest Taylor's Ferry Road and Southwest 17th Avenue, and appropriate $220,000 in FY 2022-23.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Mayor, this was on the consent agenda. I'm not quite sure who pulled it. I think they pulled it.
Oh, who pulled it?
Dan, or Don Bach, a member of the public, and he is on line.
Oh, why don't we let Dan go ahead and testify, and then we'll be able to respond better to his specific concerns.
Mr. Mayor, I can serve as presiding officer if you have some business to take care of.
I don't know, so let me find out what's going on, and if so, I'll turn it over.
Don, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Mr. Don Bach. I live in Hillsdale. I'm the founder of Southwest Trails, and this matter is something that we basically would like you to get funded, $900,000, to improve the Hillsdale-Vilco Suede Trail. Here in front of you is a map of the entire trail. It goes from Hillsdale at the top, crosses the freeway, 85, goes through Marshall Park, and then gets to Tannen Creek State Park, and continues on south to Lake Suede, and ends up at Highway 43. It's about a six-mile route. I'm here to familiarize you with it. We appreciate the, you could stick on this lake anywhere you want. I guess, provided by Brian Brady, is really effective in showing what's going on. The trail goes through, connects two regional town centers, goes through street parks, and then key walkway for Southwest residents to shop, access transit, and schools, as well, forested for about two-thirds of this lake. I want to thank Senator Wagner and Representative Salinas for their response to Southwest Trail's efforts to secure funding to improve this trail. In addition to the money you'll be approving, Southwest Trails has got $11,000 to use for volunteer-led construction and investment. We look forward to it soon, and we will also be doing alternative and wayf, website on this whole route. Southwest Trails, this is not the end of the story. We still need the motive the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department to complete about a half-mile new trail, Marshall Park to the new bridge on the over, the influence ferry. The route presently uses a detour, so you can speak to the area that we're starting. I also want to thank, particularly want to thank staff Wendy Colley, the engineer, Mike Correy, who works at her staff, and Steve Segetti. Better than we should have worked with me and Southwest Trails to get the cost estimates for each crosswalk in time to obtain the funding. They, you know, if they hadn't done that, we wouldn't have gotten the funding. So anyway, I just really want to give a shout out for the Senator, the representative, and the staff that made this happen. Thank you very much. Other questions?
Don, this is Ted. I'm going to be honest, I could hear about 10% of what you were saying. There appears to be some sort of electronic interference or something in the background.
I don't have anything going, but basically, this is a trail. I'll get real close here. Is that better?
Well, can you just explain in a couple, what is the concern? Is your concern if this project moves?
I'm thanking the Senator Wagner and Representative Salinas for the collegial activity that they did in making it happen. That's Wendy Colley, Mike Correy, and Steve Segetti.
Okay, Don, my colleagues here are better than I do, and they are saying you are supporting this.
Oh, by all means, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, that's.
You've got good testimony, the same thing in front of you are available.
Oh, good. I'll read that, because I'll be honest, I just, I couldn't hear very well what you were saying. But I really appreciate it, and while I've got the mic, I just want to say, I really appreciate your years of leadership around identifying and improving the trail network throughout the city and Southwest Portland in particular, and your work is duly noted and greatly appreciated by all. So thank you for your continued leadership.
Thank you. Sorry you can't hear me. Bye-bye.
Commissioner Rubio.
Don't go anywhere yet.
Don't leave yet, Don. Commissioner Rubio.
Don, I just wanted to echo what, this is Commissioner Rubio, I just wanted to echo the mayor's words, and thank you so much for your advocacy and your steadfast support for the trails in our community, and we owe a lot to your advocacy and your network of volunteers. Thank you.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Don, I want to just add on to the appreciation. Everybody on this council who's been paying attention knows that we would not be getting this money had you not done the advocacy that you've done over the last 20-plus years. You have been a strong advocate for the Southwest Trails, and not just advocate, you've actually done some incredible work to improve the trails as a community volunteer. And so when this was pulled, I was trying to figure out, does Don not want me to take the $782,000? I was just a little confused. But I am happy to hear that you are happy, and you will continue to be a strong partner with us. So thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to have this conversation. I was just going to accept the money and just get to work, but thank you for giving us a chance to have this conversation.
Thank you. Very good, and that completes the testimony on this item, I assume?
We have one other person who signed up for it, Charles Bridget Green Simka Johnson.
All right. Thank you.
Bridget Green Charles Simka Johnson with you this afternoon. Sometimes I am with Individuals for Justice. Joe Walsh is no longer with us, but his memory lives on in the way it triggers the mayor to think that every comment on a pulled agenda item is against. We can have, we can pull agenda items and be for them, especially these, Joe and I wouldn't always see eye to eye, when I would jump up and be like, it's okay for the police department to take money from the feds. It's great for us to get $789,000 from the state of Oregon. It's a little bit of an interesting juxtaposition between having a super-strong advocate who managed to find this money, I think his, Don's specific words were that a state Senator Wagner and a state Representative Salinas were instrumental in getting this into the state's budget. Hopefully, somebody living out near the, when we were on item 844, hopefully somebody out there near that LID can maybe scare up some money from Salem or from Washington, D.C., so that, I think the assessment there was going to be up to $24,000 on just 15 houses. And of course, y'all have different lived experience. I'm not sure what my lane is. Commissioner Hardesty recently engaged with the public about what her lane is, being a renter, I think the only active renter on the City Council. But some of us remember that Ted Wheeler was briefly a renter at 10th and Hoyt. And y'all, your lived experience is different. Some of you make sure that $33,000 per year of property taxes get paid for property in the Southwest. Some of you only pay around $6,000 for Arbor Lodge, but I appreciate your diligence to the different needs. One thing I do want to emphasize is that landlords don't pay property taxes on their rental properties. They collect the money from the tenants, and the tenants are the, if not the de jure, the de facto payers of the property taxes on rental properties. So we circle back. Don did awesome. $789,000 is coming from Salem. Good luck to the east side in finding some matching money. Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any further items for this morning, other than calling the roll?
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted, and we are adjourned, but colleagues don't leave just yet.